I am Doug Shipman, I'm the Atlanta City Council President. And I am calling to order this officially scheduled meeting, March 6, 2023, of the Atlanta City Council. I would have a couple of reminders, there is an overflow room for additional folks who want to watch the proceedings. Also, there's no food or drink in the room, so if you have brought in things from the reception, I would ask you to step out while you're taking of those. And with that, I would ask the Madam Deputy Clerk to call the initial roll.
Good afternoon, Council President Doug Shipman.
Present.
Council members Michael Julian Bond. Matt Westmoreland.
Here.
Keisha Sean Waits. Jason Winston.
Here.
Amir Faroki.
Here.
Byron Amos.
Here.
Jason Dozier.
Present.
Liliana Bakhtiari.
Here.
Alex Wan. Howard Shook. Mary Norwood.
Here.
Dustin Hillis.
Here.
Andrea Boon.
Present.
Marcy Collier Overstreet.
Here.
Antonio Lewis.
Let's go.
Quorum present.
Thank you. Next, I would ask for a motion regarding the adoption of the agenda, but I believe that we have, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Move by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. I believe there is an amendment that may be offered. Councilmember Winston?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to make an amendment to switch the order of the agenda to allow the City Utilities Committee standing report to happen before the Committee on Counsel.
Is there a second to the, second by Councilmember Bakhtiari? There's an amendment to the agenda to move the CUC Committee prior to the Committee on Counsel, immediately adjacent to the Committee on Counsel. Is there any discussion of the amendment? We can do this via unanimous consent, is there any objection? Madam Deputy Clerk, can you call the count on unanimous consent on the motion to amend?
Unanimous consent is twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, the motion to amend carries. We now are back to the original motion to adopt the agenda, are there any other changes that be proposed? Any other discussion on the motion to adopt the agenda? We can do this via unanimous consent as well, without objection, any objection to the motion, to the agenda as adopted, as amended. Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the agenda.
Unanimous consent is twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, the agenda is adopted as amended. Next, we'll move to our invocation. It is an honor and a privilege to invite my old friend Reverend Skip Mason with us today to offer the invocation.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Atlanta City Council, honored guests and friends, my brothers and sisters, let us pray. Gracious and almighty God, we stand here on sacred and holy ground in a place called City Hall, the People's Hall, where decisions are made that impact and affect the citizens of Atlanta. And so, God, we therefore ask that you would continue to bless and cover each elected official, that they will continue to make the right decision for the right time for the people in our city. Oh God, we come to you in this month, March, which is Women's History Month, and we thank you for all of the cherished women in our lives, our mothers, our grandmothers, our great-grandmothers, our aunts, the mothers who sat on the porch and watched us as we walked by, our village. God, we thank you for these friends and neighbors. God, we pray for a spirit of renewal. You are a God of many names, but you are a transforming God with an abundance of love. And so during this month, we reflect on the stories, the history and the heritage of our women and the struggle of women through the ages. We seek to learn from the voices that have been unheard. We honor the pioneers of our state and our city. We remember Mary Coombs, the first African-American woman to purchase property in this city of Atlanta. We remember those women who have served on all levels of government elected officials, from Bradley to Carolyn Long, and all of the women who serve on the City Council now. We think of the words of poet Maya Angelou, who said, "A wise woman wishes to be no one's enemy, but a wise woman also wishes not to be anyone's victim." Today, as we pray for this council, we pause the silence of the ages and remember all of the women who have passed our way. May their spirit, may their faith guide us in these days and moments. Lastly, dear Lord, we ask that there would be peace on the outside. We ask that there will be peace on the inside, and we pray, God, that there will be peace within each of us, that it will begin with you and me. What does the world need? We need love, more love, and abundant love and a lot of faith. God, we give this meeting to you, and we bless all of the mothers and women who are watching right now. And because we believe in a faith, and because we believe in prayer, all of the people who are in agreement with me for this prayer will shout amen and a shee. Amen.
While we remain in a spirit of reflection, I would ask if any of my colleagues have any remembrances that they would like to put forward. Councilmember Faroki.
Just would like to briefly recognize the passing of Ms. Pam Joyner, who was a District Two resident, lived in the fairly popular neighborhood downtown. She was the longtime general manager of the Swede Auburn Curb Market. She passed away last Friday.
Thank you. Any others? We'll keep her and all of the unnamed in mind, would you please join me in a brief moment of silence? Thank you. Now if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to proclamations, commendations, and other special awards. I would first like to ask Councilmember Andrea Boon to come forward in honor of Dr. James Densler and all of those associated with this honor, please come forward and join us up here on the podium.
Good afternoon. Well, all those that are here to honor Dr. James Franklin Densler, the first black pediatrician surgeon in the United States of America, please come forward. Scratch your, scratch your off?
Can you get somebody to turn the phone?
Scratch both of y'all off?
Yeah, stress me off too.
In recognition of Dr. James Franklin Densler, whereas the Atlanta City Council is proud to recognize Dr. James Franklin Densler for his outstanding accomplishments within the medical field and for serving the city of Atlanta with dignity and grace. Dr. Densler was born in Savannah, Georgia on July 3rd, 1932, and attended the public schools of his hometown. He graduated from Alfred E. Beach High School in 1950 and was the valedictorian of his class. And whereas in 1954, Dr. Densler was the highest-ranked student to receive a Bachelor of Science degree in biology from Savannah State College. He taught briefly in the Chatham County, Georgia school system before serving in the U.S. Army as a medic. In 1961, he was the first honor student to receive his medical degree from Mahary Medical College in Nashville, Tennessee. From 1961 to 1966, Dr. Densler did his internship in general surgery residency at the United States Public Health Hospital, Staten Island, New York. From 1966 to 1968, he completed his fellowship in pediatric surgery at the United Hospitals of Newark, New Jersey. In 1969, Dr. Densler started his practice in Atlanta, Georgia with the Atlanta Surgical Professional Association. His associates were Dr. Clinton Warner, M.D., and Warner E. Meadows, M.D. We have their wives here today. Raise your, raise your hand. Sally Warner and Jan Meadows. The Atlanta Surgical Professional Association was the first African-American incorporated group practice in Georgia from 1977 to 1988. He worked for the Georgia Department of Children and Youth Services as medical director of the Lorenzo Ben Youth Development Center, Atlanta, Georgia, and as a consultant surgeon for the Georgia Children's Medical Service from 1988 to 1990. And whereas Dr. James Franklin Densler was the first African-American pediatric surgeon to practice in the United States of America. Come over so people at home can see you. He was accepted into the surgical section of the American Academy of the Pediatrics in 1971, and the second African-American to be certified in pediatric surgery in 1976. Locally, he was the first African-American to serve on the hospital authority of Fulton County for Northside Hospital, Atlanta, Georgia from 1980 to 1988. His wife and son, Mabel Densler, James, are here today with him. James Densler's hobbies include gardening and photography. He is proud of the care and service he gave his patients. He is also very elated about the many students, residents, patients, family members, and friends who let him serve as their mentor, role model, and all who went on to become outstanding dedicated workers in their fields of endeavor. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, today proclaim March 6, 2023, is Dr. James Franklin Densler Day in the city of Atlanta, the first black pediatrician surgeon in the United States of America. Hold it, hold it, look at me, look at me, look at me. We have been joined by the Chief of Staff, the Honorable Mayor Andre Dickens, Mr. Chief
Yes, right here, sir, right here. I'm gonna lift this up just a little bit, slightly taller than our illustrious council member. I would just say, on behalf of Mayor Dickens, this is a very important moment for us, and always thankful for Councilmember Boon, who's been not only a champion for Southwest Atlanta, but really for Atlanta overall, and with this year... This is probably one of the most appropriate days for us to be bringing this conversation and this recognition forward, because this year, the mayor has declared this the year of the youth, and the mental health and the physical health and well-being of our children and our youth is something that the good doctor has really kind of put forward for decades now. And so, for this day to be recognized by our council and to be highlighted by the ceremonial letter of the mayor is just one of the most appropriate times. And so, on behalf of the mayor, wanted to definitely highlight this recognition and contribute a ceremonial letter from the mayor as a part of today's celebration. Thank you very much. So I'll leave this here with you.
Thank you, Chief Donald.
Thank you, I'm gonna slide right to the left.
Today, we have special guests that are here with us today, and we will hear from a few of them. We will hear from Dr. Valerie Montgomery Rice, President of Morehouse School of Medicine. We will hear from Dr. Edward Barksdale, Care Western Reserve University School of Medicine, Cleveland, Ohio, Chief of Surgery, Rainbow Babies and Children's Hospital, and immediate past president of the American Pediatric Surgical Association, Dr. Valerie Montgomery Rice.
Thank you, Councilwoman Boon, thank you so much for bestowing this honor on one of our heroes. It takes the village to raise a child, and Dr. Densler started a long time ago when he was teaching the sixth graders. He didn't know yet what path he wanted to take, but he knew that it would be a path that led to greatness. And as you look around this room, all of us have been a part of his village, and he has shepherded us one way or another with his kindness and his grace. He is a man of integrity, inclusion, cooperation, unity, unselfish mindset, sacrifice and obedience. He is what we call a servant leader. He has a lion's heart, though, because it has taken a lot of courage. You gotta remember, if you go back and look at the history, when he set about to go to medical school, he wanted to go to Medical College of Georgia, in his home state. He met all the criteria guys, yet the segregationist policies of the board at that time prohibited his admission. Instead, the institution provided him with a tuition scholarship and a travel stipend, as he termed segregation money, for him to go to Mahary Medical College. Thank goodness for Mahary Medical College. Because it is what graced us with Dr. Densler. There, he learned the art of caring even more. He learned culture humility. He learned that the smallest things can provide wellness in your day with just a little act of kindness. For me, kindness came in the format of creative photography. Every Valentine's Day, I would get a set of cards from Dr. Densler and stamps of all of the famous women, black women, who have stamps. As the first black woman named to a freestanding medical school, he understood what it meant to be first, and he graced me with that kindness. I cannot tell you what it has done for me, and if you look around the room, every one of us can tell a story of how he has touched us. I say to you, thank you for the faith that you had in me as your leader. I said, thank you for the commitment that you had to service and to excellence, and for all the young minds that you continue to touch. You all, he still comes over and teaches and shares wisdom with us at Morehouse School of Medicine. I end with this quote, "People who end up as first don't actually set out to be first, they set out to do something they love, and we know you love what you do, and we love
And before we hear from our next speaker, I must recognize these living legends that stand with him, his wife, Mabel Densler. Ms. Henrietta Antonine. Ms. Billy Suba Aaron, wife of the legendary Hank Aaron, is here today. Judge Brenda Cole. Wife of Warner Meadows, Ms. Jan Meadows is here. Sally Warner. Wife of Clinton Warner. And now, for our next speaker, Dr. Edward Barksdale.
Good afternoon. Councilmember Boon, President of Council, City Council Members, distinguished guests, family, Dr. Densler, and in this month of the woman, Ms. Mabel. As a man who happens to be a surgeon and who happens to be an academic leader, I recognize that it's those people who stand behind you who get you to days like this, and to not acknowledge, as Dr. Montgomery Rice mentioned, the village or the queen of the village, then that would, I would be remiss. I bring you warm greetings from cold Cleveland. I am absolutely delighted to be here today, and when Dr. Densler reached out to me 10 days ago, I knew I had a lot to do to rearrange my schedule to be here. I am profoundly honored and humbled to join you at this celebration of a remarkable career, contributions, and just the role that he is as a man, as a humanitarian. You know, I first met Dr. Densler and Ms. Mabel at a dinner at one of our national meetings, and for me, I felt like a groupie, I thought I was meeting a rock star. And what astonished me was his humility and his grace, and Ms. Mabel's grace. We sat and we talked, and I knew who he was. He finished his training in 1976 as the first African-American pediatric surgeon in the United States. I finished my training in 1994 as the sixth African-American, and clearly, there is a significant disparity. So, so this is not to celebrate me, this is to celebrate the trailblazer. Because when there is a jungle, we don't walk through the jungle unless there's someone who's been there before. who's been there before us with a machete so that we can follow in their footsteps. And those of you who have been in jungles with machetes know, it's not for violence. It's for creating a path for others. So, for me, this dinner was fateful, right? It was the beginning of a 26-year relationship in which I didn't get stamps of women, but I got nice pictures and cards. And equally as important, I get words of encouragement, because there's sometimes in this world where the weight of what we do becomes very heavy. I would like to close, like one of my other role models and gold models, Dr. Montgomery Rice, who I'm a way senior citizen to her that we met in medical school. But I'd like to use this quote that I find so apropos today, and it's by Pericles when he spoke at the first phase of the Peloponnesian War, when people, the Greeks, were down about what things had gone on. And I'll have to read this to you. I commit it to memory, but in front of this august audience, I want to make sure I get it right. And what Pericles says is, "What you leave behind is not what is engraved in stone monuments, but what is woven into the lives of others." So, Dr. Densler, I'm your tapestry, as are many people here. We are the threads of your tapestry. You have been a master weaver of the human spirit, of the human aspirations, and of this city of Atlanta. You've been the bedrock of support for so many undergraduates, medical students, residents, physicians in training, and you have inspired many leaders in American surgery, including deans, Henri Ford, University of Miami, Dean Andrea Hayes-Jordan Howard, and Chief of Surgery there. Surgeon-in-Chiefs, Anthony Stallion, Beaumont Hospital in Detroit, Jeff Arperman, Vanderbilt, and James Gilbert in Huntsville. The pipeline goes on and on, and you have done this in a way that has been humble and gracious. So, as I close, a debt of gratitude, which is immeasurable, and I can only say, thank you, thank you, not just for me, but for my colleagues around the country and for the city. My grandmother would say, in life, "You want to live a life in which you plant trees in whose shade you will never sit." And also, if this is your grandchild, that your grandchildren's grandchildren will be proud that you walk the face of the earth. Thank you so much.
Dr. Densler, we also have a proclamation from Congresswoman Nakima Williams from the 5th Congressional District of Georgia. You have a special recognition award presented to Dr. James F. Densler. You have influenced and inspired the citizens of Atlanta by becoming the first African-American pediatric surgeon in the United States of America, and for going above and beyond the call of duty in responding to and providing exemplary medical services to the citizens of this country. We commend you on this day, March 6, 2023. Ms. Jan Meadows.
Good afternoon, Chairman of the Council, distinguished guest of the Atlanta City Council, and as the widow of Dr. Densler's partner with Atlanta Surgical PA, the Meadows family bestows hearty, hearty congratulations, and thank you for this honor. Thank you.
And now, Dr. James Franklin Densler. But before that, I want to make sure that we know that Dr. Booker Poe sent his daughter, Jan Poe, to be with us today. Jan, thank you, Jan. Dr. Densler.
Everybody who knows me know that I'm brief, and I like to get out of school on time. I'm so delighted to be here today to see so many people who I've worked with, students, residents, and I'm not only talking about college students, I'm talking about high school students. And all this is a wonderful experience. I'm so thankful to the Atlanta, Atlanta, and the Atlanta Council, and from my 10th District Leader to have us here today for this celebration. This is a celebration from a trip from Savannah to Atlanta with stops in between. And I need to tell you my turtle story. Sometime, if you see a turtle on the top of someone's house, the first thing you would ask, "How did he get up there?" Someone helped him get up there. Well, I'm your turtle for the day. A lot of people helped me get up there. Thank you very much.
And now, we have a video presentation from the Atlanta City Council.
This is my whole family, my niece and my nephew, my sisters and my grandmother, and all of them came to my graduation on the Graham Bus in 1961.
Dr. James Densler is reminiscing over a lifetime of fond memories. The Savannah, Georgia native and Army veteran made history as the first African-American pediatric surgeon in the United States. No easy feat, as many public medical schools were not integrated at the time. Densler was accepted into Mahari Medical College in Nashville, Tennessee. His hospital internship and residency was in Staten Island, New York. He married his wife, Mabel, in the hospital's chapel.
We married June 23, 1962, so that has been 60 years.
He would move to Atlanta and start his practice in 1969 as a partner of the Atlanta Surgical Professional Association, having success without the advancements readily available today.
Some of the cases are outdone, and I showed her slides, and they say, "What did the sonogram show?" I said, "We didn't have no sonogram during that time." And they said, "Well, what did the CT show?" I said, "We didn't have no CT scan during that time."
Despite it all, he served 30 years, missing only one day due to sickness. Dr. Densler would go on to pour his knowledge into first and second-year medical students at Morehouse School of Medicine. Now, at 90, Densler is enjoying retired life with the love of his life. His advice for those hoping to enter the field of medicine is simple.
Be a person that loves people and cares for people.
Wise counsel from a man who dedicated his life to doing just that.
Thank you to all members and friends of the Friendship Baptist Church who attended today, our students, residences, doctors for Morehouse School of Medicine, and all of our distinguished guests. Thank you for being here to honor Dr. James Franklin Densler. And now, we will have a photo. You can stay right where you are. Mrs. Densler and family, please come forward right here. Dr. Densler, right? Right here, right here.
They almost won't let me.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. Thank you. We... We will now move to our next proclamation. I would ask Councilmember Byron Amos, I would ask Councilmember Byron Amos to come forward to honor Abel Mabel Thomas. The chamber would please be quiet.
Bring it down.
As we transition out, if you are here with Abel Mabel Thomas, would you please come up, please? Thank you.
Derek's over there, too.
I saw him.
What y'all doing in the front? Stop messing with Brown.
So, as we begin to move forward, this is truly a special day for me. I am City Councilmember Byron Amos, Atlanta City Council, District 3, and as I said this morning, a proud protege of Abel Mabel Thomas. I remember my eighth-grade promotion ceremony from John F. Kennedy Middle School. There was a young lady, state representative, who came and gave us words of wisdom and realizing she was from the city of Atlanta, realizing she was from English Avenue, the neighborhood right across from mine in Vine City, realizing she walked and talked the same streets that I walked and talked and came from. I said to myself, one day, I wanted to be just like her. So, I remember this young lady bringing me down to the state Capitol. I was a page of hers and Frank Redding, if I remember, just to go on a history trip. But I am honored, I am proud to be able, on this day, as a City Council member, to say thank you to someone that the entire world knows simply as Abel Mabel Thomas. So, I have, earlier today, we actually bestowed upon her the Distinguished Recognition Award from the Council District 3 for her outstanding community service. You know, being a member of District 3 is special, because we come from a historic district. But I'm gonna leave that there so you can research it. On this day, and Women's History Month, it's even more special to stand here with all of her colleagues, former colleagues. But more importantly, we're here to do a proclamation from the Atlanta City Council in recognition of Abel Mabel Thomas, whereas the Atlanta City Council recognizes the life and contributions of one of Atlanta's most influential political leaders. And whereas Abel Mabel Thomas has been a powerful voice for change, freedom, justice, and equality for all Georgians and disenfranchised people around the world, throughout her tenure, Abel Mabel Thomas has fought for her, has fought issues such as education reform, women's reproductive health, living wages, racial profiling, economic development, access to health care, and senior citizens' issues. And whereas her incredible service began in 1984, when she was chosen as a presidential delegate for candidate Reverend Jesse Jackson at the Democratic National Convention held in San Francisco, while there, she formally announced her candidacy... while there, she formally announced her candidacy for the Georgia House of Representatives, where she eventually won a highly contested battle with a longstanding incumbent. And whereas in 1997, she begun... She again sought public office, winning post-one-at-large seat on the Atlanta City Council, which allowed her to focus on quality-of-life issues most impacting people throughout Atlanta. As a city council member, she was responsible for passing an affordable housing policy bill, obtaining 4.9 million for the Atlanta green space conservation, and was a major stakeholder in community efforts to secure the historic West Side revitalization project. And whereas Abel Mabel has been a successful executive director of the Greater Vine City Opportunities Program Incorporated, which provides youth and family enrichment and educational opportunities for high-risk urban youth. Now, therefore, it be resolved that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens, do hereby honor and commend former councilwoman and state representative Abel Mabel Thomas for all of her contributions to the city of Atlanta and to the state of Georgia. And it is signed by the council president and all members of the Atlanta City Council. So here's the difficult part. The difficult part is everybody love Abel Mabel. But I'm gonna control this mic. So, um, the mayor could not be here with us today, but we do have our Chief of Staff. I know he's making his way this way to bring a few words on behalf of the current administration.
Jane, Jane Davis? You're okay? Okay, good. I wanna make sure.
All righty, I'm gonna adjust this thing one more time. Well, listen, again, always an honor to stand in for our mayor, always an honor to stand side by side with Councilmember Amos and really our entire council. I think one thing I did not hear that really aligns with today, I'm hearing back in 1984, also served as a delegate for the DNC, which is very timely again for us, you know, as, as we ensure that Atlanta is the place to be as we pursue, you know, the DNC being here in Atlanta. I think we can go on and on, whether we're talking about being a champion for women's rights, rights of affordable housing, which is one of the mayor's key pillars, and really just being a great advocate for the community. So I think our mayor wanted to make sure that with him not being able to make it, some of our top brass was here, one, just to say congratulations, but also, two, provide this ceremonial letter on his behalf. And so we are thankful, not only for you and your contributions, but extremely glad and honored that you're being able to join us today and that Councilmember Amos kind of coordinated this whole activity. So on behalf of the mayor, wanted to say thank you and also provide you this ceremonial letter on his behalf. So, thank you.
So it's, it's a lot going on today. We got crossover day, and this proclamation really don't speak to all of the great work that was done over at, um, the State House as well. So I have a couple of people I definitely have to mention and, and recognize today, then we get back very quickly to our speakers, but we have B. Wynn, state director for Senator Warnock. Is she still here? Well, she was here earlier. Then, of course, I think I seen Derrick Bozeman, um, of course, former councilwoman, Cheryl Derrick is back. They're good. Next is former colleague, Sherri Dorsey, Sharon Beasley Teague as well. She's here from, um, across the street. Natalie Hall, Commissioner. Yep, behind me, Senator Vincent Fort. Is he still here as well? Okay. Um, Khadija Rahman definitely is here. And of course, um, former council president Felicia Moore as well. We do have other people that have brought things, and on behalf of our Congresswoman, Councilwoman, Councilmember Matt Westmoreland will present.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Matt Westmoreland, and I am here to present the next honor that comes from the seat of American democracy. That comes from the United States House of Representatives, from our Congresswoman, Nikima Williams. Uh, and I will read two portions of it. Says, "Today, I proudly celebrate the honorable Abel Mabel Thomas for her lifelong service and enormous impact across Georgia's 5th Congressional District and the entire state of Georgia. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Nikima Williams, a member of the United States House of Representatives, hereby issue this congressional proclamation in recognition of Abel Mabel Thomas. In witness thereof, I set my hand and caused the seal of the United States House of Representatives to be affixed on this 6th day of March, 2023." Thank you so much, Mabel, for your tenacious advocacy and all you have done for this city, for this state, and for the country. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. And someone who needs no introduction, but I would still call her name, City Councilwoman Andrea Boone.
To the honorable Abel Mabel Thomas, the late Reverend Joseph E. Boone loved you. You were everything to him and to this city. But when I was appointed in 2010 to run the mayor's office of constituent services, they thought that I only knew people in District 10 and 11. And they were concerned. But little did they know... Little did they know that I participated in Christmas parties sponsored by the honorable Abel Mabel Thomas and Mingador and Easter egg hunts and community meetings and numerous town hall meetings. And I knew Shaheed, I knew Maketa. I knew Drew Nail Thomas. And we could just call the roll. So on behalf of the people of Atlanta, we present to you, your wall is full of these, but we wanted to let everyone know that we commend you and we love you. I stand on your shoulders. I stand on your shoulders. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. As, um, Councilmember Michael Byrne make his way because he will be next. There are some other people I'd like to recognize. Um, I think it was, um, Chief of Staff said some things that was not mentioned about my friend and colleague here. First and foremost, she's a graduate of the established, esteemed Booker T. Washington High School. So let me say that. Um, I think she also made history playing basketball at Georgia State University, um, as well. Just, just little-known facts about, about the great one, um, Abel Mabel Thomas. So next, um, also, we have Judge Patsey Porter in the house as well, another alumni of Washington High School. But, um, we also have community people. Maketa Johnson's name has been called, and her daughter as well. We have Sarday Jones here and a host of community people. And of course, um, Ms. Clemmie, uh, from, from Candaceville, People's Town, uh-oh. And she always correct. So, so that lets me know, get off the mic. Michael Byrne.
Thank you, Councilmember Amos. Give me an A. Give me a B. Give me L. Give me E. Did I spell that right? M. Give me an M. A. B. L. E. Abel? Mabel? Abel, Mabel. Abel, Mabel. Abel, Mabel. Job done. Abel, Mabel, she's the one. She's the one to get the job done. As I take the podium, as they say in late-night television, but wait, there's more. This bouquet of flowers, B. Wynn from Senator Warnock's office was here. Uh, these are flowers from Senator Wafiel Warnock, here on your behalf. And I just want to thank, uh, Councilmember Amos for bringing, bringing you forward here today to be honored. You are not only a Athena cast amongst the stars on behalf of our community. You have gone door to door, hand to hand, breast to breast, cheek to cheek with the people of this city. And I will borrow from the eulogy of our dear friend June Monday, when the great Emma Darnell funeralized her. And this is not a funeral, but this applies to you. Is that she used a passage from the Bible that one of King Solomon's generals lived amongst the people and brought King Solomon great victories. And Solomon wanted to build him a castle. And he said, "No, I do the work and I go from tent to tent amongst the people." Abel, you go tent from tent amongst the people. You are my friend. You are my shero. You are who I admire. I remember that night that you got elected, when we partied on Simpson Road, up there on... 1984. That's right. I remember that night. I remember when I was even smaller, when Abel was taking it to the hoop in 1975 as captain of the Booker T. Washington Girls Basketball Team. That was the seven-quarter champion, sub-region champion. I remember when Abel used to babysit my nephews. We love you, we appreciate you. You are the model of a public servant. You have washed the feet of Atlanta, and today, we will wash yours. God bless you and I love you.
So as my colleague, um, Councilwoman Keisha Waits come up, I still want to acknowledge a few people. We have Community Leader, um, Joy Barnes in the house, Davida Huntley, and of course, the great Brenda Davenport as well.
Greetings and good afternoon. Can, uh, former Councilmember Bozeman and Sherri Dorsey and Khadija join me, please? Terrific. So today is very special for me. I'm asking my colleagues to join me because... President Moore, can you join me as well? Leader Abel Mabel is one of the few people that have served in two legislative bodies. In fact, I see my colleague, Sharon Beasley Teague. Thank you for being here today. But many of us stand on your shoulders. A lot of people don't know that when you go and get a mammogram today in the state of Georgia, that happens because of our leader Abel Mabel Thomas. There's so many different things that individuals don't know. And so it's a pleasure to, to join you today. I remember, and you remember this as well, Representative Teague, we were debating minority contracting in the state of Georgia. And as I offered the legislation, no one in the room had any interest in supporting it. But when you stood up and said, "I need everyone to listen," the room changed. And so everything changes when you're in the room. And so today is bittersweet. We give you your flowers while you are here with us. We salute you. You are our shero. We stand on your shoulders. And all of us, all of us today are here because of the work that you did. And so I thank you. We salute you. We love you, and we look forward to your next journey. Thank you so much for what you do.
I'm, I'm just gonna say a few things because at the end of the day, all that other stuff is good, but you gotta have a fighter amidst you. And what I want to say to you today, as the commissioner of the mighty six, I would not be Commissioner Khadija if it wasn't for this woman, what this woman poured into me. We had plenty of nights that we talked late. We had plenty of days that we had to raise money because folks talk, walk the walk, but they, they talk the talk, but they didn't walk the walk. Many a times, we were out in the streets making sure that a homeless pregnant woman had somewhere to stay. Many a times, Mabel would call someone and they found, she would find out that they was getting ready to get fired and they, and Mabel, in her eloquent way, would say, "This is the honorable Abel Mabel Thomas. I understand that so-and-so has been threatened to lose his job before the conversation is over." Nobody's gonna fire that person, uh, state rep. I don't know where you got that information from. And so what I say to my sister today in the arms, we've had our plenty nights of fussing in parking lots, cussing each other out. But guess what? The love was always there. And when you have someone that will say a word to the right when it's not popular, or more important, ends her conversation with "Power to the people, power to the people, power to the people." This is the living legend, and I salute you today, shero.
Yeah, we, we, at the proper time, I'd like to, obviously. Where you, how do you want me?
You, you, you come in. You come in next, actually. So, um, as we get ready to play a video, the next voice you will hear will be from our honoree. Um, I also like to, uh, recognize just a couple of more people. I see Bishop John Lewis, um, Chairman of the Vine City Civic Association in the house and others. But after we play this video, you will hear from my leader, my friend, my mentor, Abel Mabel Thomas.
Former Georgia State Representative Abel Mabel Thomas willfully stood on the front lines to fight for the causes that mattered most to the people of Georgia. For over three decades, she's been addressing disparities in healthcare access, women's reproductive health, housing, living wages, and economic development, to name a few. Thomas is no stranger to impact. She makes it every time her feet hit the ground. She entered politics boldly in 1984 as a presidential delegate for then-candidate Reverend Jesse Jackson at the DNC. She would step into local politics, securing the Atlanta City Council post-one-at-large seat, giving her the opening she desired to help the citizens of Atlanta. When elected to serve the state of Georgia, Thomas wasted no time. To address the growing issue of maternal mortality, she and other Black female lawmakers approved the expansion of Medicaid for postpartum mothers. Thomas is the author of the first mandated benefit in the state of Georgia that requires insurance companies to pay for mammograms, pap smears, and prostate cancer screenings. So many accomplishments, we can't address them all in one setting. But when asked about her legacy, Thomas says she wants to be known as a woman who loved the people and gave her all for the freedom of Black people. Make no mistake about it, she is the honorable Abel Mabel Thomas.
Uh, first giving honor to God as the leader of my life. It's an honor to be here. Before I speak, I would like to, uh, have my long-term sitting partner on the city council, uh, the honorable, um, Derrick Bozeman, WAOK, 1380 on your dial. Let's hear it for my man Derrick.
First of all, it is good to be in City Hall to do what should have been done some time ago. You know, Abel Mabel is a special kind of person. She's a female but a fighter. A woman, yet a warrior, a lady, yet, yet, yet a lion. And she loves her people. They talk about a standard bearer. See, what I do when you want to measure true leadership, don't look at what it did in the last two years. Don't look at what she did on her run-up to when she wanted office. You want to measure a true public servant, look at what they did when they wouldn't in office. And if it does not add up and become more than what they did when they aspired to leadership, I will give you one Mabel story, too, real quickly, because they're significant to me. 1989, I was a 22, 23-year-old student at Morris Brown College. had taken over the administration building. I didn't know what kind of trouble I could have gotten in, but I had a charge to keep. And I knew that if we were going to be successful in forcing change, we needed strong people on outside. I look up among all of these students, this is 1988, 1989, I believe it was, and I see this sister, I'm in the building, and I see this sister in the back, and she's giving them all the heaven they could take. About 780 students. So I asked somebody, "Who is that student? What school is she from? I've never seen her." They said, "That's not a student. That's Abel, that's State Representative Abel Mabel Thomas." She forgot what position she held at the state, and she knew I need to be on this campus to make sure these students' rights are secured. So that's how far back we go. But more than that, the one thing you don't know, she said, "I'm going to tell them five things about me that they don't know." And so let me tell you one before she get to it. This sister has a serious prayer life. That was a time in my life, I don't know if it was after I lost City Council race or President City Council, one of them, I wasn't feeling well. And Mabel called me up, and she said, "How you doing?" I said, "I've had better days." Before I knew it, that's one thing, she got a what? Serious prayer life. The second thing you need to know, she's a serious cook. That sister showed up, and she ate clean, too. Showed up at my house, and this is 25 years ago, with salmon and rice and green vegetables, and it was the best meal. If my momma's watching this, Mama Bozeman, forgive me. It's the best meal I ever had. But what she did was restored my confidence and restored my hope and made me know that there is something that happens even after politics is over. She calls even now, we pray together often, because you cannot do this work. The Bible is so true. We wrestle not against flesh and blood, but spiritual wickedness in high places. And the fact that she's able to recognize that, and she reminded me just yesterday, that we laid on the ground together when this very chamber, you know, I always come up here, I had to speak truth to power, and some other folks in here supported a bill that will arrest homeless people for asking for charity. This sister and I slept on the ground with the homeless people in front of this building. Four o'clock in the morning, the sprinklers came on and wet us all up. I looked at Mabel and wanted to cuss her out and said, "What have you called me to?" We looked at each other and laughed and said, "This is what homeless people go through every day." And so I thank God for that, and I thank God for her. We got up the next morning and came and did all we could to stop that bill from getting passed. I got arrested that day out of this chamber. She didn't get arrested, though. But no, one because she didn't want to. But the bottom line is Mabel Thomas is an extraordinarily exceptional, uncommon human being. And for that reason, I am grateful that the City Council and all of its component parts at other levels of government stopped long enough to say to this sister, "Thank you so much, and job well done."
I just want to double-check because I can't see all the people. But is by chance Representative Barbara Mobley here? Okay, I want to make sure. And then I want to just have Sharon Beasley Teague. There were certain people in the Georgia General Assembly that, this is what I said to them. I said, "If you got a bill, whether you want to, you get to me or not, if you want me to be a signature on it, or you want to say in a press conference I'm with you." I gave two people in the General Assembly carte blanche. And one of them was State Representative Sharon Beasley Teague, and the other, State Senator Dunzella James. They could use my name at any time because we on the same page as far as our work. So Sharon, if you would say something. Come on, like you want to.
Can I speak? Okay. Thank you, Mabel. Greetings to everyone. Because without a person that understands what you're trying to do in this life, you can't get all those things done. Because there's so many she wanted to do, had to do, had a date and time certain to do it, trying to keep up as a job. But I love this sister. She is what Tyrone Brooks called Jose Williams Jr. The only two people at the time, when she left the state, came to City Hall, and she decided to go back to the state that had done that at that time. I mean, it hurt time to do what she always needs to do. And she's a minister. I don't know what folks are saying or doing, but she is. We got ordained together. And I know she loves the Lord. So she make things work for the good of those that love the Lord. And she bring her people with her. I am so proud to just be here at this moment to say I love you.
I love you, too.
Everybody, thank you.
All right. I know time is short, but I couldn't, Sherri, Sherri Nelson? She had to leave? Okay, cool. I just wanted to make sure. So here we go. "For God so loved the world that He gave His only-begotten Son, that whosoever believes in Him shall not perish but have everlasting life. I am a stand for peace and justice and everlasting life. Sustainable, community gardens, your own plot of land, Black cultural schools, conflict resolution, more family time, and an active fitness life." I want to bring to you one thing that people don't know about me. But she was smart. She escaped. It was my cat. I have a cat. And I've spent my whole life being a dog person, growing up. And in the last two or three years, I've become a cat lover. And this cat, I was going to bring her today. But when I got ready to put her in the little thing, she'd escaped. She must have knew it was a lot of activity because a lot of people at my house sort of whipped me to this morning. So she was like, "Uh-uh." She saw that little cat carrier, and she was like, "Uh-uh, bye." So she boogied. The other thing is, I don't know if anybody, is anybody here from the Women's, the Georgia State University Women's NCAA Basketball Team? Because most people don't know that I'm a baller. I not only played for Booker T. Washington High School captain of the team, as Michael Bond said, but I also was recruited from, for Georgia State University's first Women's NCAA Basketball Team. All right? So what I'm trying to say to you is that most people don't know, in '75, women used to play six-on-six. Two stationary forwards, two stationary guards, and a rover. Many women's politicals, not political, but basketball careers was over. Because when they went to five-on-five, those women who were stationary forwards or stationary guards were not used to running up and down the court. But I was what they call a rover, so I was used to running up and down the court. So I was able to play on that team. And one thing I will say is women from all over the state of Georgia was recruited for Georgia State. And there were some women, I mean, who could never miss a free throw. I mean, they practiced, they never missed a free throw. And then I had other persons who could jump so high and whatever. So to me, my number's 24. And to me, I can't understand all the way why Coach Cooter didn't play me as much as he needed to. So I wasn't used to being on no bench, right? So, but what I did finally come to the conclusion, if Coach Cooter and Coach Joe at Georgia State had have known that I was going to grow up to be a state representative or city council, I do believe he'd have played me more. All right, y'all. But really, what I want to say is that, yeah, in other words, the only reason I've made as far as I have is because of my prayer life and the Lord. You know, if it had not been for the Lord on my side and I on the Lord's side, where would I be? Because ultimately, it's not that the Lord is on your side, because we already know that. But the question that we have today is, are you on the Lord's side? Are we willing to stand up holy, boldly, stand up for the people, and stand up for truth, stand up for justice, even if 99 people are for the wrong, and you want to for the right? I say you must stand. Because that's the time that we in right now. There's a county commissioner named Vivian Thomas out of Henry County who says that I'm the pathway leader. So in other words, the Lord allowed me to grave, to trail, to make a trail, a path for other young people, other women, and other men. You know, let me not call the roles, because many people don't know the fact that not only can I get myself elected, I've gotten many others in Atlanta elected. One of the people that I got elected was, you know him right now, SC, Chairman of the DeKalb County Commission, Michael Thurman. Michael Thurman had ran at least twice before my organization, Jay Smiler, Walker, myself, Stacy Davis, went down to Athens to make sure he understood how to get the vote out. And so Michael Thurman, Sharon Beasley Teague worked in her campaign as well. Obviously Byron Amos, like Byron Amos said. Byron said to me, when he was 12, "I want to be, do what you do." And so it is. And so it is. And so it is. Not to mention Jared Samples out of Perry Homes, District Nine. Not to mention John Lewis, 1986, when John Lewis, our organization, went to the streets. And it's so many people the Lord has allowed me to touch and be a part of. And I have something to say to people interested in politics. Be coachable. I mean, people call me sometime, Byron, and say, "I want to run for office. Somebody told me to call you." And then I tell them, set it up for them what to do. They call somebody else, ask the same thing. Don't waste my time. I mean, you know, I got the notches on my bill as far as elected office. So if you want to be in public office, be coachable and love the people. When you get in, forget about the beautiful suit you got on. Look at your constituent rolls. Call people back when they call you. You got to call people back, you know? So I just appreciate all of you. But let me just say one thing I've done that most people don't know. And if I could have understood how big it was, I might be a millionaire now. One of the biggest issues right now going on in America, especially with women, is reproductive justice. In June of 1994, I was working as a consultant for the National Black Women's Health Project, which is located 1237 Ralph David Ammon Avenue. And I was asked to go to this conference. When I got to the conference, about 200 white women and about 12 Black women, including me. I'm an organizer by nature. So immediately what I did was went to each Black woman and asked them would they go to lunch with me, they box lunch, go to lunch with me. And at 12, we all went to lunch, and I asked each of those other Black women, "Who are you? What state you from? Why are you here? And do you believe that the issue that they're talking about with the Pro-Choice Alliance talks of Black women's health?" And what we came to the conclusion, it was okay, but it did not. So in June of 1994, the group that we convened, we coined the phrase reproductive justice. So every time you see, hear the word reproductive justice in America, it was coined by 12 Black women, and I'm the convener of those 12. And so what I'm saying to you that not only did the Lord allow me to have the first mandated benefit in the state of Georgia that Keisha talked about, where insurance companies must pay for mammograms, pap smear, and a prostate cancer test. And the prostate cancer test was added on because of Buddy Childress. State Representative Buddy Childress said to me, "If you add prostate cancer to your bill, I'll get the support, and we can get this thing passed." And we did. But the thing about this bill, y'all, I want to tell you, is the only people we allowed to sign off on the bill was women. This is the only bill that's ever passed at General Assembly that white women, Black women, Asian women, Democratic women, Republican women, all signed off on. And we only let women sign the bill, except for when it got to Tyrone Brooks' desk. He saw it. He said, "Uh-uh." He signed his name on it, too. So one day, I was somewhere, and Kathy Cox with a C was running for governor. And she saw me in the audience, and she was talking about women getting together and organizing. And she said, "There was a bill that passed in the General Assembly." And she looked at me, and she said, "Abel Mabel, you were there." I said, "Not only was I there, was my bill." So what I'm telling you, you have to tell your story. Because if you don't tell your story, other people will tell it, and they might not include you in it. Oh, y'all listening to me? Right. So the bottom line of the story is the, there's one of the 12 women of the, we call the 12 Mothers of the Reproductive Justice Movement in America. All right? So one of those persons was able to get what we call the MacArthur Grant, which is a genius grant, and she was one of the 12. And so what I learned in life is that if you just work, 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 the Lord will bless your work, and the Lord has blessed my work. But a lot of the work I've done, I've not got credit for, but it's okay. Because if I write this book fast enough, y'all can understand where I'm coming from. Byron, thank you again for this particular honor. I just thank all the people here, Matilda, her daughter, Clement. Clement worked in my office with Byron as well. But Clement, Clement is a person that just jumped in my car one day. I didn't know her. I was coming down Capitol Avenue, and I slowed up, and all of a sudden Clement looked at me and jumped in my car. I didn't know who she was. So I just went along with it. I said, "Clement." Then when she told me who she was, she said, I said, she said, "I'm Clement." She thought she was another lady, whatever. But either way, I said, "Well, either way, why don't you come work in my office? So if you jump in my car, I might put you in my office." All right. All right. So everybody come closer, we're going to take the picture. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Atlanta. Thank you, Georgia. Thank you for all who have loved me unconditionally. Thank you for the work that I've been allowed to do. Thank you for the work we did around Catherine Johnson, the 92-year-old grandmother. This is the first case before Trayvon Martin, the police misconduct. And we were able to get $5 million for the family. Three police went to jail. DC 3 got taken off the book where they can throw you down, say you in a known drug area. The Citizen Review Board was reenacted. And what's the fifth thing? Well, I can't think of the fifth thing. But either way, that was the first police misconduct, and that was English Avenue, Catherine Johnson. So I thank my girlfriend, who just passed away, Diane Myers, for her work with that particular issue as well.
She did. So normally, we'll move up front for pictures, but we're going to stay here, and we're going to move this cup here. If everyone else can just blend in, move around, so we can stay focused on the state rep here. And... What's going on, Nick? Come here, I'll come with you now. Come on.
Everybody, hold just.
Thank you, Victor.
We're going to, we're going to make a slight adjustment to the schedule. Without objection, we have high schools, middle school students who need to get back to class. So if we can get our middle school students first for our proclamation, we're going to go slightly out of order. If I could ask Councilmember Faroki to come forward and the David T. Howard Boys and Girls Middle School Basketball Teams to come forward for their proclamations so they could get back to class.
Y'all come on up. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Councilmember Amir Faroki. I have the honor of representing Council District Two on the Atlanta City Council, which includes in part the old Fourth Ward where the David T. Howard Middle School sits. It is a school with a long and lustrous history. Once a high school where Dr. King matriculated, our first black mayor, Maynard Jackson attended school, Lonny, Lonny King, Olympic gold medalist Mildred McDaniel Singleton and the great Clyde Walt Frazier of NBA fame. And in that legacy, that basketball legacy, it's my pleasure today to present two proclamations to the David T. Howard Rams Middle School Boys Basketball Team and Girls Basketball Team. I have proclamations here celebrating the boys' city title and the, the girls' championship appearance, which is the first, I think, for the school. I will not read both proclamations in full, but I do want to celebrate their success and the school's success today with all of you. In recognition of the David T. Howard Middle School Girls and Boys Basketball Teams, whereas the Atlanta City Council is pleased to recognize the Girls and Boys Varsity Basketball Teams from David T. Howard Middle School in Atlanta's historic Old Fourth Ward neighborhood. And whereas earlier this year, the girls' team became the first girls' basketball team from David T. Howard to reach the APS Championship Game. Whereas also this year, the boys' team became the first from the school to capture a basketball championship in APS. Now therefore be resolved that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the City of Atlanta, to hereby congratulate the, the Girls and Boys Basketball Teams at David T. Howard Middle School for their outstanding seasons and proclaim this sixth day of March 2023 as David T. Howard Middle School Basketball Appreciation Day in the City of Atlanta. And before I turn it over to Coach quickly, I want to thank you all for your, your patience. You all thought you were getting out of class today, but you still got an education in, in civic life here in the City of Atlanta and appreciate your, your attentiveness and your patience. Coach?
I would like to say thank you to the boys and girls for a great season. My motto was, the hardest part is getting there, the easiest part is playing the game. So they did an excellent job academically and they also did a great job on the basketball court. So again, congratulations to both teams.
Someone from the girls team want to hold y'all's? From the boys team, you want to hold y'all's? So step all the way up to the front here and we'll get a photo together.
Hey, Malik, y'all let them get in front.
Look, if you can't see the camera, you're down in the picture. Make sure you can see the camera.
Be quiet, man. Hey, would you be quiet?
All right. Right here. Three, two, one.
Thank you.
I'm next.
Next, I'd like to call forward all of those with the honor of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc. to come forward. It's my pleasure to present this one. Come on both sides. It is a pleasure to have the opportunity to highlight such a wonderful organization and group of people who do such great work in our community and around the country, especially as we have just ended Black History Month and have started Women's History Month. It is so appropriate to have this proclamation today. I will read it in brief. Says, "In honor of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc., the Atlanta City Council is pleased to recognize the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc. for addressing community concerns and promoting gender and racial equality. And whereas the mission of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc., or the NCBW, is to advocate on behalf of black women and girls to promote leadership development and gender equity in the areas of health, education, and economic empowerment. And whereas the Coalition's vision is for black women and girls to live in a world where socioeconomic inequality does not exist. NCBW believes in gender equity, inclusion, respect, integrity, accountability, economic empowerment, collaboration, and racial and social justice. And whereas the current agenda for the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc. is to focus on health, education, economic empowerment, strategic alliances, and civic engagement. And whereas NCBW wishes to promote the awareness of black culture development, develop the potential within its members for effective leadership and participation in civic affairs and to act on specific issues of national and international importance. The Coalition also seeks to cooperate with other persons and organizations to achieve mutual goals and to foster principles of equal rights and opportunities. And whereas today, we are honored to celebrate the exemplary efforts of this organization. Now therefore let it be resolved that we, all members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta, do hereby declare this sixth day of March 2023 as National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Inc. Day in the City of Atlanta. It is my honor to do so today." And, and let me just say that there are many policy positions and many large programs that happen, but perhaps the most important work that happens is mentoring on a day-to-day basis where young girls all across the country, including here in Atlanta, receive life guidance, educational guidance, and a role model for how they can be leaders just like all of the members of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women are. And so it is an honor today. I am very pleased to bring forth the President, Alicia Sutton, to bring remarks. Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief of Staff, Erin Johnson, and to the President, Councilwoman Doug Shipman. On behalf of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women Incorporated, Metropolitan Atlanta Chapter, officers, board of directors, and members, we are honored to accept this recognition during Women's History. We have our national immediate past president and current National Executive Director, Virginia W. Harris. And we have our national first VP of Programs, Minnie Miller. We are a 35-year advocacy organization that advocates on behalf of African-American women and girls to promote leadership development and gender equity in the areas of health, education, economic development. The Metropolitan Atlanta Chapter is the third-largest chapter of the United States with 128 members. Our values are racial and social justice, collaboration, integrity, and accountability, inclusion, economic empowerment, gender equity, and respect. We have two signature programs, Teens on the Move and Sisters Helping Sisters. Our Teens on the Move program is an education program that focuses on mentoring, civic education, STEAM, and scholarships. We serve the Booker T. Washington High School and we have 50 students in our program. Our Sisters Helping Sisters program, in collaboration with our Salvation Army on Marietta Street. We help women that are transitioning out of domestic violence relationships and help them learn how to become financially independent through financial literacy workshops, life skills, and emotional and mental coping skills. We also have three signature fundraiser events, Gourmet Gents, Unsung Heroines, and Golf to support our mentoring, Sisters Helping Sisters, and scholarship programs. We also have Health Committee, a Public Policy Committee, and Sisterdomics and Membership Committees. Again, we are honored to be recognized during this Women's History Month. Thank you to the Atlanta City Council.
Let me just see if there are any of my colleagues that would like to say a word. No, anyone else? Well, with that, let's take a picture right up front. Thank you all. Our final proclamation today, I would ask Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to come forward and all of those in honor of Panky Bradley Miller to come forward.
I'd like to ask all those associated with Panky Miller, please come forward. Has that happened already?
That has happened. Sir Poli's bringing up the rear. There's always somebody in the rear.
They say you're bringing up the rear, Mr. Sir Poli. I guess that's appropriate with a Z, with a Z name. But it really is a pleasure to be here today, particularly on such a day where we've honored so many people who've had an impact on the City of Atlanta in their own way, really at every level. And so, but I'm really pleased to be here today to honor a person who has been a trailblazer, who's not only been a tremendous public servant in elected office, but also away from office, as Mabel Thomas mentioned. You know, it's, but that's an indication of great character is what you do when the eyes are not upon you. How do you serve? How do you conduct yourself? How do you go about your business serving the fellow man? And so as with that, I am pleased to honor an alumni of this chamber, of this august body, and also alumni of the body that preceded it, the first woman alderman in the history of the City of Atlanta, and of course, its first elected council member. And without further ado, I will read the proclamation in pertinent part. "In honor of Panky Bradley Miller, whereas the Atlanta City Council is pleased to recognize Panky Bradley Miller, an esteemed community organizer, leader, and advocate in celebration of the 50th anniversary as the first woman elected to serve in the Atlanta City Government, you know, on the anniversary of this Women's History Month. Whereas Panky Bradley Miller was born in 1940 in Paris Island, South Carolina, and grew up in Macon, Georgia. She attended Antioch College in Yellow Springs, Ohio to gain exposure to more liberal, to a more liberal education and lifestyle. She majored in psychology while studying languages abroad. Ultimately, she enrolled in the University of Chicago where she majored in community organizing. Following her matriculation at Antioch College, she returned to Atlanta where she became involved in the women's movement. In 1971, she became..." In 1971, she became the first woman, I guess, appointed by Mayor Sam Michelle to serve in city government, previously referred to as the Board of Aldermen. She also served as Vice Chair of Common Cause Georgia. Whereas Panky Bradley Miller made history in 1973 alongside Mayor Jackson, becoming the first woman appointed, well, I guess it's elected, to the Atlanta City Council, and becoming Jackson's first, along with Jackson as the first African-American mayor. Whereas she served on the Atlanta City Council at post 15-at-large, representative for two consecutive terms, and was instrumental in organizing and leading the efforts to halt the construction of the Stone Mountain Toll Road at I-485. And whereas she worked as the Director of the City's Bureau of Planning in the 1980s, during her tenure, she successfully secured citywide support for the new zoning ordinance that established special public interest districts. As Development Director in Atlanta's Trust for Public Land, she worked closely within Mayor Shirley Franklin's administration to secure public and private funding to begin implementing the Atlanta Beltline Plan. And whereas Panky Bradley Miller has always carried herself with great humility and has labored with dogged determination to advocate for women's rights and the better, safer, and more robust city. Now therefore, we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Atlanta, do hereby proclaim this day as Panky Bradley Miller Day in our fair city. I have set my hand and have called the seal of the city of Atlanta to be here and to affix. Congratulations. Are there any comments from our council members? We got former councilmember Mary Davis from District 6.
I will just say it was a, Panky led me astray. In the next group, and it has been an exciting journey. And we're so grateful to Michael and Andrea and all the people who do these historic occasions. I just want to say it was a great pleasure and honor to work with Panky on all these things, especially the community organizing part. So thank you, Panky.
Thank you, Mary.
Anybody else?
Love you.
Mary, are you? Another mayor.
Another mayor. And I just want to say, Panky, that your leadership and your trailblazing in our city is absolutely unsurpassed. And how you have worked over many, with many mayors and through several, not generations, but decades, has been fabulous. From the Trust for Public Land to your zoning work. We're in the middle of our first zoning rewrite in 30 years, so we will be adjusting your beautiful handiwork from then. So congratulations for all you've done for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you for breaking the glass ceiling for all women. Thank you so much. We love you, we love you, and we will make sure that history reflects your part in history in the city of Atlanta. Congratulations.
Councilmember Jason Winston here. I just also wanted to lend my voice and congratulate you on this well-deserved honor. I have had the personal privilege of getting to know your son, Alex, who is a good friend of mine and neighbor. And so I've gotten to know you and your family. But I want to also thank you for your continued support. You've sat on my porch and mentored a young candidate who was running for office and taught me what it would be like to be in this position. So I also just want to thank you for being here today and for your service to the city of Atlanta. So thank you.
I just want to add to everyone else, thank you so much for your beautiful spirit and for your courageousness to, as Andrea Boone said, break that ceiling. For all of us women elected officials who have had the honor to serve in this chamber, thank you for your love, your support, and your continued work in the community. So well deserved.
I'm so glad everybody came to honor my mother. She was, she's done a lot for the city, and I'm so proud of her. And I remember, well, barely, but remember going to the campaign rally somewhat that she did all over the city, and she did a lot for the city. So thank you very much, y'all. Okay. And unless anybody else?
Yeah, I do really want to, my heart is full at this hour. You all have sat through momentous things that we've recollected together. But I do want to say to Council President Shipman, Councilmember Bond, and all members of the City Council, I am really touched by this recognition. And given that this year is the 50th anniversary of my election to the council, I should probably say how blessed I am to even be alive in ambulatory. But really, looking over these past five decades, the real blessing of my life has been the number of opportunities that I've been given to work toward the vision of the beloved community. In the words of our beloved colleague John Lewis, "In the company of public servants whose talents and dedication have been an inspiration to me." In addition to the people that have already spoken, I would certainly single out Mayors Mayor Jackson and Shirley Franklin. Each city administration has unique challenges. The climate of fear that now pervades communities throughout our country is one of the most vexing of those challenges. The rampant violence of gun culture and the fear of crime, a fear both manufactured and reality-based, cry out for solutions that are hard to come by. Each Sunday, my church prays for elected officials based on our awareness of the importance of good leadership. So to members of the City Council, I feel like you're...
Thank you all so much who have come here to honor those that we honor today. We will now move into our remarks by the public. I would remind everyone that you are allotted two minutes, unless you have been granted time by other people who have signed up. I would ask that there not be any clapping in the chamber or outbursts. You can snap if you like what somebody else is saying. But to respect everyone who has come for public comment today, I would ask that you respect their comments, just like we will respect yours. First up is Gloria Gates, and next will be, after Gloria Gates, will be Brother Muhammad. Gloria Gates? Brother Muhammad? No? Next will be Fallon McLew, sorry, no, no, no. Next will be Will Harlan. Two minutes.
Hello, City Council. My name is Will Harlan. I'm the Southeast Director for the Center for Biological Diversity, a national nonprofit with 1.7 million members and supporters. We're here today to present this petition of more than 8,000 signatures, including many from Atlanta and Georgia, urging you to permanently protect the Willaunee South River Forest. Yes, thanks. This is on your watch. You can choose to act, for better, for worse, like it or not. The South River Forest will define you and your career as a city leader. You will be remembered most for this decision. You will have to look in the mirror and face this question. Did you cave to the corporate elite, or did you stand up for the people? That's why you wanted to serve in the first place, right? To be a champion for the people, to make a real difference for communities. Well, this is your chance. This isn't going to blow over. The current plan will heighten tensions and harm communities for decades. Our organization, alongside many others, will fight for years, for decades, for as long as it takes, to protect this forest and ensure the community voices are heard. Alternatives exist for this training facility, but not this forest. The South River Forest will be your lasting legacy. What do you want it to look like? Make sure it's one you can live with. This is your last chance to get it right. Save your political career, save your soul, save the forest.
Thank you.
Just really quick, I just want to let you know, thank you. Since that's one document, we're going to make copies, and I'll pass them out to everybody. Okay? Thanks.
Next will be Henry Jordan.
Giving honor to the Spirit of God, everyone that's here. Let not the foot of pride come against me, and let not the hand of the wicked remove me. Psalm 36, Chapter 11, verse. David first describes the rebellious sinner, then the blessedness of the righteous man, and concludes with a prayer, that the righteous man may be protected from the wicked. Jesus, protect me against the wickedness of James Griffin. For whoso shall offend one of thee little ones believing me, it will be better for him that a millstone were hanged about his neck, and that he would drown in the death of the sea. Matthew 18, Chapter 6, verse. Offenses are viewed as a reality that must be accepted in the present world. But woe, the prophet condemnation to death, to the one who is the source of the offense. When you place your behind in my face, you ask to kill. But Christ says to you, you shall be killed. Had not the power over the clay, and the same lump to make one vessel unto honor, another unto dishonor? Romans 9, Chapter 21, verse. Power, whether it is with the attitude that would produce such a question, it reminds man of his limited understanding of the unlimited sovereign God. To honor Jesus is to honor His righteous word. It is a blessing that we need, I know that I need. But if it be of God, ye cannot overthrow it, lest happily ye be found even to fight against God. Acts, 39, verse. We are to obey civil government, but when it goes contrary to the explicit commands of God, we must obey God and be ready to suffer the consequences. To obey Jesus is life, and disobey Jesus is death. We need Christ more than He need us.
Thank you. Next will be, and I apologize, I'm doing my best to read, Ezell Jupiter, that may not be the correct first name. Two minutes.
Two minutes, alright. Hello, my name is Basil Leo Jupiter, and I'm a community organizer at the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm living in Vine City. I'm here to talk about what are effectively evictions against Section 8 recipients. I'm joined with fellow tenants to demand that the City Council regulate these corporate landlords to keep accepting Section 8 vouchers. There's already a source of income anti-discrimination, there's already an income anti-discrimination law, 220-0-1155, but it is not being enforced in Atlanta. The laws are on the books. We demand that you enforce the ban on source-of-income discrimination. All throughout the city, particularly in Vine City, English Ave, Section 8 recipients are being kicked out of their homes by these greedy corporate landlords, buying of complexes, such as the one that I live in, kicking out many of my neighbors by not accepting Section 8 vouchers when resigning leases. Many people being forced out of their homes have lived there for five years, some of those on 16 years, and yet they're being forced out. Many express anxiety about moving and finding another complex to accept their vouchers because less and less complexes are accepting vouchers. I'm coming here to say this cannot go on. Recently, millions of dollars in housing assistance that was never used to keep people in their homes are sent back to the federal government. Meanwhile, millions of dollars are going to a cop city to further victimize black and working-class people. The money and resources are there to keep people in their homes, but from this City Council, there does not seem to be the political will to keep people who... council, there does not seem to be the political will to keep people who built this city living in the city. Property values are sold through the roof that what's considered affordable housing is still too much. There needs to be public housing for low-income people so people can actually afford to stay in this city. That's why we are calling on the city council to regulate these landlords to accept Section 8. We demand that you enforce this source of income, that you enforce this source of income anti-discrimination law. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would remind everyone, please, please, you are doing so well with the snapping. Please remain in that spirit. And next will be Dewan Robinson. Dewan Robinson? We'll go back up to Brother Muhammad, I believe you're back in the room?
I want to first thank you people that supporting that change over there, because the people that they're going to look to put in the jail are going to look like me and my Brown brothers. But I want to make it perfectly clear today, deprovision has to have some change. People can sit up on the mic and just talk for hours almost, and when you have them finished, they get up and go back to their domain. But what about the people you passed over to come to the mic? You got people that look like myself, like the majority citizen of Atlanta. They need help. You have Ms. Marjorie walk around with rent control, with one moratorium. You got a state legislator talking over at the state. Let's do something for them. But I want to be clear here, miseducated Negroes of the 21st century, Cardigie Wilson wrote that book in 1933. Why is him talking about that? You are dog matter, antimatter. You are part of the universe, the mama of the cosmos, dog matter, antimatter. Divine soul for spiritual energy wants you to know, return to your soul for energy, return to your antiquity, return to that what you have in your DNA that accost the record. It's time for us to know, we have to come together with all human beings, all that want good for the betterment of this society. We are 360 degrees, not 33 degrees. You have to be whole-listened today. Why? Because it's time, nature is not waiting on you to make your mind up. Look at what's going around this world. Peoples are standing up and rising up. They're tired of being controlled by the 1% and the so-called 10%. The 10% are those that have the resources and have access. But you miseducated Negro, your mama the cosmos say I got your back. The father of the earth say you can use your mental thoughts and make them manifest into the physical. And the son, not S-U-N, I'm not with S-O-N. I'm not with religion no more. From Genesis to Revelation, there was not one person in your scripture that were born from a woman womb cannae. I'm taken away from that story. Let's find the love in one another. Let's do right in one another. I greet you as I did not greet you. I say let me let come, I admit you I hold tough, I say, I say, and I say.
Thank you. Next will be, this is your last warning. If you're clapping and cheering, I'll ask you to step out. Okay? Is Dewan Robinson in the room? Next will be Chef Dr. Kenneth Willhoyt.
Alright, thank you very much for your patience.
Chef, let's go ahead and get started. Ambassador, Atlanta, please.
My name is Chef Dr. Kenneth Willhoyt. I'm the president of the Soul Food Museum and the Soul Food University. We are celebrating our 20th anniversary and we are asking for the city council and our honorable mayor to get behind us and support us with donating a museum, space, building, and land with parking in the city of Atlanta for our tourists that come here to have a place to come and experience our hospitality, agriculture, service of Atlanta. Now, beside, first of all, the, I'm gonna say a quick prayer. I'm gonna do this as quick as I can, so bear with me, because I'm spirit-led. I do things by spirit. I'm at that age, you know, it's not about me, it's about the spirit. We're gonna do, I'm gonna do a prayer, quick prayer, and then liquid libation, which is an African tradition. So can we all pray at this moment, please? God, grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change and the courage to change the things we can and the wisdom to know the difference. Aye. Alright? And now we proceed with our liquid libation, which is an African tradition. You call out the name and you pour the water on a live, living plant. I'm a teacher, so if you remind me, you gonna learn something. Okay, this is the libation. Ms. Orange, we lost, who helped organize the Sweet Auburn MLK March. So we call out her name, she's an ancestor. Reverend White of Ephrim Baptist Church, we lost him. We call our ancestors' name out, pour the water. Tommy Dorsey, 100 black men, we lost him. Pour the water. Aye, thank you. And, oh, this is sad, the clerk is not a student that was shot, and he was a basketball player. Basketball is my favorite sport. So we're gonna lift his family and his name up in prayer today. Now, we'll have a song that was selected by the spirit of the ancestors. Listen to me, not by me, but by the spirit of the ancestors. I asked God, I said, hey God, what song should we introduce today? This is the one that was chosen.
Good afternoon. My name is Minister Donnie James. I'm honored to be here today in support of the Soul Food Museum, because I think it's something that's very important. I'm glad to be in Atlanta for the first time in such a beautiful meeting and giving honor to whom honor is due. And I want to just thank Dr. Cook for giving me an opportunity to play Amazing Grace. Amazing Grace is my favorite song because God is truly amazing and what he has done in my life is absolutely amazing. Thank you all, you can enjoy it. We're gonna cut it short and call me out, something else to do. That was just something to let you see where we was coming from. Amazing Grace is such a song that means so much to the world. So that's it for now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, now I would like for you to do me a favor. All of us have our mobile phones. I want you to Google the story and the meaning of Amazing Grace. Google, so you'll know what you just heard and what you just...
Okay, now I would like for you to do me a favor. All of us have our mobile phones. I want you to Google the story and the meaning of Amazing Grace. Google, so you'll know what you just heard and what you just...
Good afternoon, councilperson. It's been some time since I was last here. For those who are not familiar, my name is Devin Franklin. I am Movement Policy Counsel for the Southern Center for Human Rights. And similar to the last time when I was here, I would like to speak to you all concerning the lease that you all allowed to take place under legislation concerning the Atlanta City Detention Center. For some, matters of government often boil down to what is politically expedient at the moment; for others, it's a constant assessment of actions that directly impact community and quality of life for all people. Last summer, dozens of members of the Community Over Cages Coalition, including myself, repeatedly embodied the latter, appearing before this council as it pondered what it could do to aid in alleviating overcrowding at the Fulton County Jail. We ask that members of this council keep its promise to convert the then-nearly-empty Atlanta City Detention Center into a health and wellness center that directly address what we know to be the systemic root harms encountered by those Atlanteans who have the fewest resources, instead of taking a step backwards and continuing to use ACDC as a jail, a jail to house Fulton County's overflow of persons in custody. Subject matter experts such as myself came to you with well over a decade's worth of experience in Fulton County courts. I wasn't able, I wasn't here just to tell you what I thought was going on or what I felt was going on. I was able to tell you from my experiences working in those courts where the inefficiencies Those inefficiencies lied with slow and ineffective indictment processes that still exist to this day, and the issuing of onerous bond amounts that despairingly impact poor persons by continuing to trap them in jail on charges where better-moneyed people can purchase their freedom. I think we're noticing the theme between a lot of things today that folks in Atlanta hate poor people. We told you that that legislation authorizing that lease and making more jail beds available to Fulton County would not solve the problem. We told you that because of staffing issues with the Sheriff's Department, that the lease would effectively essentially only allow the transfer of women from Union City to the ACDC campus. For those that don't know, there's a main jail where the men are housed, there's a separate campus at that point in time where women were housed in Union City. The women were moved from Union City, as we told you all what happened. We also told you that it would do little to alleviate the overcrowding concerns that were very important to us but were politically expedient at that point in time for others. During our debate, there was a lot of hot air spewed, a lot of assertions were made that we essentially were trying to stall a process. It was asserted that two elephants were fighting, and that the grass was being harmed and that somehow we were the ones that didn't care. That somehow, people who made their careers off of gelling people care more about the well-being of persons in custody than the formerly incarcerated women and the advocates who have built their career on advocating for those people. Today, I regrettably, but predictably, am here to report on the status of the jail lease. I'm not sure how many of you are who were really urgent about that at that point in time have cared to look into where, what the status of that was today. The men and women, the men that were languishing and suffering in Wright Street back then are still languishing and suffering in Wright Street today. There are, as of this morning, 48 men housed in ACDC. And I don't know if you all recall, but we told you, you are not going to be able to alleviate the overcrowding concerns at Fulton County Jail by signing legislation that allowed for them to be housed at ACDC without an actual plan that made it possible for those persons to get over there because there are still staffing issues at Fulton County Sheriff's Department. This council as a whole has failed in its efforts to protect persons in Fulton County custody, and your sincerity relating to the true motivations of that piece of legislation is severely in question. But all this is not lost. As I began my remarks, not every matter of government has to be a weight of political calculus in the moment. You all are always free to act in the space that is love and is community, based in informed You have a head start. There was a Georgetown report, there was an ACLU report, there was the actual Jail Population Review Committee report that you all sanctioned. Thank you, Councilman Dozier, for that amendment. However, I came to council that day when that committee made their reported findings, and I was sad to see that council is full today. We had a bunch of proclamations going on, but not, there were not many people present when that report was read. So what am I asking you all to do? I'm asking you all to care in a moment where the eyes aren't on you. And if I have to put eyes back on you to do so, then I'm here to do it. What I'm asking is for you all to put action behind this legislation that you put together and make sure that the problem is solved and not just clap and pat yourselves on the back for getting something through. As a council, and pursuant to what is permissible under the intergovernmental agreement, we encourage you to make weekly inquiries into the following: complaints from people in Fulton County in ACDC custody about nutrition, conditions, and staff conduct. There were some protesters associated with the Cop City Movement who were arrested on some charges and are in the facility, and we have been made aware that they have certain diet restrictions that are not being complied with and no one cares to follow up on. We are asking that you make weekly inquiries into any serious health-related issues related to people in Fulton and ACDC, Fulton ACDC custody. We ask that the existence of any programs and services you believe will be available to people in Fulton County ACDC custody, including the number of those enrolled, be reported on, because we were told that it was this really great program where people would be able to work in a jail and learn how to work when they got out of jail. It was a whole show behind that. I remember, y'all remember that? We're asking that you make an inquiry and see if actions have been put behind those words. Additionally, and most importantly, you are giving your facility to people who are responsible with staffing that facility. And we are asking that you inquire on a weekly basis as to the currency vacancies, the current vacancies on jail staff in the Fulton County Sheriff's Department. This is not a matter of me just trying to have a "I got you" moment or an "aha" moment. Since the lease has gone into effect, folks have died in that jail, Fulton County Wright Street, not ACDC. Last year, over 15 people died in Fulton County custody in Atlanta's jail. To put that in perspective, I think Rikers Island, which is for all of New York City, had about 18 or 19 deaths last year. Atlanta's not the size of New York. I don't need the last minute 45 of my time, but perhaps you all can sit and think about it before the next person speaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Tracy Thornhill, followed by Alan Lee.
Good evening, council. My name is Tracy Thornhill. I am the Executive Director of ASME, Georgia, Local 1644. Earlier, we gave our proclamations, well deserved to Dr. Densler, well deserved to Abel Mabel Thomas, well deserved to 100 black women, and to the schools, the middle schools. And I'm here to say today that we so quick to give our proclamations, and believe me, I've had enough bestowed on me in the last two months, or some of you already know that. But what we gotta get back to doing is appreciating those frontline workers that didn't get what was due to them last year, and we waited so we can get it this year. I'm here today to open your ears, because from this point on, until the budget passes, I'm gonna be right here in front of you, because we've, look, we've given significant increases to police, significant increases to fire, and they deserve it. But what about your watershed workers? What about your sanitation workers? What about your parks and recreation workers? What about those people on the front line? I wore my frontline shirt today because I want y'all to understand that when you go out there, I'm retired now, but I got 33 years, 33 years of hard labor on my back, and those people are going through the same thing, so I know what they're going through. I know I don't have much time. I'm not gonna take 10 minutes to say what I want to say. I just need y'all to open y'all ears. I need y'all to hear me, because y'all will not stop seeing me until we get what we want.
Next will be Alan Lee.
Good evening, or good afternoon, it seemed like it's evening time. Good afternoon, city council members. I am Alan Lee, and I came really just to see old friends, check out a council meeting. But this has been an interesting council meeting nonetheless. Let me make an unsolicited suggestion: those that get 10 minutes, by all means, sign them up. Let them be heard, but please put them at the end in consideration to those who may want to speak just two minutes. You know, as I revisit the city of Atlanta, I see a great change in just five years. You know, I walked on the Belt Line the other day, didn't look like Atlanta. I'm seeing super gentrification, and I'm not here today to upbraid, downdress, criticize nobody. I'm here today to say we're better together. And I heard somebody behind me... And I heard somebody behind me say, "I am." Well, I'm not. I'm solution-oriented. And when this council is right, we should keep them right. And when they're wrong, we should help them find right. And that's applicable to our mayor as well. I think you're more right than wrong, but I also have some concerns about the direction that we're going in. And I'm gonna be sharing some of those concerns with you. For the last week or so, I've been meeting with a number of officials, including some of you guys. I hear some of my friends and critics alike say Alan's lost a step. We shall see. There's nothing wrong with the city of Atlanta that can't be fixed by what's right with the city of Atlanta, and I think there's a lot of things right. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Reverend Darcy Jarrett? Is Reverend Allen on the list?
Good afternoon, city council members. I'm an ordained Baptist pastor, so I do like it when people speak back to me, so I've tried again. Good afternoon. Thank y'all so much. Thank you so much. I'm standing here today with the Faith Coalition. We are clergy and faith leaders. We are citizens and we are protectors of the land that doesn't belong to us, but belongs to God. We are deeply concerned for our community members, for ourselves and the implications for the future of public safety in the United States if this Cop City development goes forward. To ignore the cries of residents, you're moving forward to destroy the nation's largest urban forest and replace it with the largest militarized police training facility in Turtle Island, now known as North America. Despite a record-breaking amount of public comment opposing the facility, as I'm sure you know, you still pass legislation to build Cop City. We are troubled by leadership that continues acting against the will of a people, instead aligning itself with corporate money and the dominant power structure. We're urged by this message of peace and compassion in all of our faiths, and we deplore this escalating militarization by city and state government, even as recently as last night. But not to diminish the killing of Rayshar Brooks here in 2020, three minutes from where I lived by the Atlanta Police Department and Tortuguita on January eighteenth. I'm gonna move for the sake of time towards what we are asking. We are asking for all people of faith, those of you who sit on council regardless of your tradition or background, and those who stand with moral conscience, to stop the Cop City project. My faith convicts me and tells all of us that there is a better way. We have a prophetic moral imagination and opportunity here to do something different in Atlanta, to do something different for the South, and all eyes continue to remain on what will happen to Wilani's People's Park. We ask that you drop all the charges against the forest defenders, every single charge. Domestic terrorism must be investigated, but these charges are trumped up. We are requesting an independent investigation into the killing of our sibling, we say their name, Manuel Terran Tortuguita, for which recently released video footage suggests there was lying and deceit around the incident on behalf of law enforcement in their initial reporting. Please investigate this. We're asking on all current and former city council members and mayors, including Keisha Lance Bottom and Andre Dickens, to listen to the voice of the people and your constituents, rescind your explicit or tacit support for building Cop City. Finally, we're asking for a community process, a community process. Let us come together with moral imagination to envision how the Wilani River Forest can be the heart and lungs of community wellness and healing, not more militarization of police. Because if we have learned nothing else since the uprisings of 2020, we know as people of faith that we keep each other safe. Jesus himself charged and killed by the state, not for working with colonists and imperialists, but against the empire that he sought to overturn. Friends, there is a better way. We want a process that centers the voice and needs of Muskogee leaders and community members, our indigenous siblings, incarcerated folks in surrounding prisons, families and neighbors who live in close proximity to the firing range and under police surveillance. We want holistic community safety, clean water, tree canopies, a future for every single one of our children. May it be so.
Thank you. Next will be Dana Stevens.
Can we deliver? We have letters.
Followed by...
We have copies as well.
Right here. Jake will take those and pass them out. Next will be Dana Stevens and then John Mangum.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Dana Stevens, and in January of 1994, I left rural southern Minnesota to head to Moody Bible Institute in downtown Chicago to be a youth pastor out in the wilderness. In March of 1994, while walking back from a church on the west side of Chicago, I was violently beaten by five young black men that then said, "Welcome to racism," that changed the course of my life. For these last thirty years, I lived in that neighborhood and I've done everything I can to fight against the injustices that these young black men and our black and brown people face, family members face. I walked the streets, got to know the gang members, started a mentoring program. From there, I went to Cook County Jail for eighteen years and started up a program called the Life Learning Dorm. At the juvenile detention center, I spent thirteen years as a victim impact panelist speaker where we reached almost seven thousand young people a year. And for the last eight years, I was a restorative practices coach for Chicago Public Schools, where our aim was to put a kink in the pipeline to prison syndrome. A year ago, I relocated down here to Atlanta for a new chapter in my life. I reside in the Old Fourth Ward, just blocks away from Martin Luther King. And I am here because there's a saying that says, "It's not always what you know, but it's who you know." And I know there's some who's up here right now that might be able to help direct my steps to where I can further out my passion. One of the things that I want to bring to the table is ICANN, where we can put a free tablet with free web service into the hands of our underserved youth and young adults. And so here I have a packet. I don't know if I have enough for each of you, but I have a packet that gives you my resume. It gives you some letters of reference, and it gives you a little bit about what I've done in Chicago during those thirty years. But like I said, those words transformed my life, and I've dedicated it to be an advocate and a fighter for justice for my black and brown family members. And my non-for-profit is called One Love, because we need what was spoken today a little earlier, a little more love. And so I know I'm gonna mess your name up, Mr. A, Mr. Amir. May I at least give you... Thank you. Thank you, council.
Actually, you can give it to Jake. He can pass it out for you. Thank you. Next will be John Mangum.
Good afternoon, city council. Last time I was in here, I came to discuss code enforcement and the interim procedures. I was alerted to one of the ordinances that's under discussion at the moment to, that proposes to impose a moratorium for sixty days, to conduct an audit and include the internal and external communications of the way the interim process works. I've been involved in the interim process. It wasn't a pleasant experience. I've spent a lot of time dealing with it. Didn't have a good outcome. Without going into that long, drawn-out story, which details I brought to everybody here when I was here last time, I would like to voice my support, my partner's support. The interim process results, in some cases, properties coming down that arguably shouldn't. I think the interim process, sometimes they work with blinders. Once the property's been authorized for demolition, there's no going back. There's no second chance. There's no meeting in the middle. I had to go through a TRO process to get a conversation going. I've spent time. I've spent money. And we're seeking engineering reports and architectural drawings to keep a property in place. This is a parcel that's in Councilmember Lewis's district, over in District Twelve. It's a vacant building with no roof, and because it doesn't meet code, the insistence is that it be demolished. So I'm here to encourage you to look closely at this ordinance, support it in any way you can, and hopefully the result of the audit and the findings can be implemented to result in what is being stated in the ordinance, to get that section of code enforcement, whose group has an incredibly difficult job, but to get that section up to a best practices level like a lot of code enforcement is already operating at. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Kiana Jones. Due to yielded time, you have up to eight minutes.
Well, good afternoon, once again, to this Atlanta city council. My name is Reverend Kiana Jones, and I stand here before you as a member of the Faith Coalition to stop Cop City. And I'm looking at each one of your faces, and I really want to understand how it is that you asked people to vote for you and then ignored their voices. How it is that you feel okay with yourself lauding Abel Mabel, who had a lot to say about treating people right, who had a lot to say about the words of the Bible that many of you like to quote. Well, let me remind you of something. Be not deceived, for God is not mocked. That whatsoever a man soweth, that shall he also reap. So understand this, that the sins of the Father will be visited on the children. It has happened time and again. So it may not happen to you, but what about your child? What about their children? What about their children's children's children? What will your legacy be? You so-called legacies of black missed leadership sitting up here on this council. Let me tell you something. Representation is not enough when you don't represent the people who elected you. The people came out and spoke clearly. And let me go to the Bible one more again and say that we are here as clergy to cry loud and spare not. We are opening our mouths and crying with a loud voice to say that we don't want Cop City. I live in East Atlanta. I don't want Cop City. I got five black children. I don't want Cop City. I like breathing clean air. I don't want Cop City. I wanna drink clean water. I don't want Cop City. I don't want Black Hawk helicopters landing around the corner from my house. I don't want Cop City. I don't. My neighbors don't. My granny don't. She's been in her house almost fifty years, and you suckers will never get it through gentrification because we knew what to do. And Mary Norwood and the people of Buckhead, this will not be your trade-off. When are you going to stop dealing with the white supremacist infrastructure and dealing with the so-called black elites in Atlanta in your silent agreement that as long as they go along with the white establishment, they gonna keep them other N-words over there in control? We know that in the twenty-to-thirty-year cycle of gentrification, by the time black people can move back into my neighborhood the way we used to be, it'll be twenty or thirty years from now. And Cop City was your answer to make sure that our black asses stay right over there and don't go to Buckhead. Well, we telling you right now, as sure as Peachtree runs into Buckhead, this is our land, and we ain't gonna stop fighting. We are not going to stop standing. Get used to these voices. Get used to these faces. Get used to being called out. And if you feel like you in church, then maybe you oughta say ouch, because I know I'm standing up here preaching to somebody. And if you harden your heart, be reminded of the story of another pharaoh who had a very hard heart, who would not free the people of God, who would not lead them to their land. You know what happened in that story. Don't think that you will not suffer the same fate. Don't think that the infrastructure of this so-called black mecca will not come toppling over, because it will. And how long are you gonna treat us like we dumb as dirt? We're not. We are not. We know more than you think we know, and the fact that you chose to ignore, ignore a legal court order to stop work and allowed greedy corporations to go ahead displacing people, but taking up my green space. Don't you know that the environment has been used to oppress and suppress black people and indigenous people for ages? And we see this. So we're talking about environmental justice. We're talking about economic justice, because the least y'all could have done was mandate that those contractors who work on that job, that they hire at least thirty-three percent of community members. But you're not doing that. So you don't care about the air we breathe. You don't care about the water we drink. You don't care if we can make a living wage. You don't wanna sustain that community. You wanna displace us so that those who are giving you kickbacks can have something that they said, "We built over here and we got them Negroes out." Why are you okay with that? Because I know somebody who's on this council had a father who stood to make sure that Negroes could stand and be wherever they wanted to be. I'm saying all of it, because at the end of the day, there are a lot of self-righteous people sitting in seats of so-called authority, and you are deluded to think that you have power. We have the power, and we gave you authority because we trusted you. And shame on you, Dustin Hillis. I don't give a damn if you don't look at me one time, because you know, you know what you have done, and you know you ain't worth the dirt up under your feet. But I tell you what, in the words of my granny, because I ain't got to lean on the Bible. Mary Kate Thomas is a strong woman and taught me to fight. In the words of my granny, "You may not pay what you owe, but you will reap what you sow."
Thank you. Next will be Laura Kearns.
She yielded the time for us.
She can't yield her time. She's got her time. She can take up to eight minutes. She can go up to eight minutes. Next is Laura Kearns.
May I yield my time?
Are you Laura Kearns?
Yes, I am.
Who would you like to yield your time to?
Jordan Carman.
That's fine. Ms. Carman, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. His J. Jordan Harmon. Thank you. My name is Jordan Harmon. I'm Muskogee Creek from the Creek Reservation in Tulsa, Oklahoma. I'm a member of the Deer Clan, and I descend from the Chiaha Tribal Town, which is originally located in the southeast United States, just a few miles north of here. I come from a dislocated people. I wanna say thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you to the city council for hearing us, sharing with us your Black Leaders of Atlanta earlier today. And some words from the honorable Abel Mabel really resonated with me, which is to tell your story or someone else will tell it for you. So what I've heard here today is a lot of residents of Atlanta trying to tell you their story about why this development in the Trichment Creek Park that's now known as Wilani Forest is hurting them. I also wanted to share my story and our history in this land. Here in Atlanta, this land has seen a lot of violence and a lot of trauma. And in 1832, when the tyrant Andrew Jackson signed the Indian Removal Act, is when my people were forcefully relocated from this land to Oklahoma. And ever since then, this land has been under the stewardship of colonizers that have repressed the remaining black and indigenous relatives in this area. Some of our most traditional people have come here today to share with you, but they weren't allowed to, they weren't able to stay the whole time today. And they wanted you to know that the Miko of our Hillebi ceremonial grounds back home in Oklahoma has come here, where our original fire was started, and then it was taken all the way to Oklahoma. And now we wanna bring it back to our land, and we wanna start those fires again. Well, when we come back, we need a land to come back to. This is my first time coming back to visit my homelands. I wanted to visit here where my ancestors are as a spiritual and personal journey. I didn't wanna come here to try to fight the violence that I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is from the residents is they need investment in housing and public spaces and not investment in further militarized policing. They want investment in the well-being of incarcerated and not further violent incarceration, but the well-being of the community members. Thank you, Mado.
Next will be Neil Sardana.
Land back. Land back.
Neil Sardana is next.
Hello, council. My name is...
My name is Neil Sardana. I'm here representing the National Sierra Club, the Georgia Chapter of the Sierra Club, and the Progressive Workers Union, which represents union employees at 350.org, Sierra Club, and Greenpeace USA, and several other national nonprofits. And I'm here to read a statement on behalf of the Sierra Club, standing with those protecting our forests. The Sierra Club is horrified by the killing of an Atlanta forest defender known as Tortuguita by state police, and we continue to rise in solidarity with the movement to protect the Walani Forest. We reject the mischaracterization made by media and city and state leaders referring to the opposition of this project as terrorists and outside agitators. Thousands of Atlantans and many local organizations, including our local chapter, came together over the last two years to voice our opposition to this project, to Atlanta's mayor and city council. They submitted public comments, sent emails to their representatives, organized marches and rallies, canvassed neighborhoods, and more. Despite these efforts, the mayor and all of y'all have continued to push this project forward, ignoring the will of the community, choosing to engage in violence by sending police to harass those protecting the forest. Now protester who is dedicated to defending a force that is critical to the health of our communities has been killed. Shame on our leaders, shame on y'all for letting this happen. This is the first time in American history an environmentalist has been killed by the state, and your, their blood is on your hands. Their blood is on your hands. Y'all cooperated with the police to allow this to happen.
Time has expired.
The Sierra Club remains steadfastly opposed to this project. The Walani Forest helps mitigate flooding, captures and sequesters carbon from the air, provides a natural filter for air pollution, helps keep our city cool, will aid our efforts to deal off the worst impacts of our climate change. The chapter, Sierra Club believes that these benefits should not be given up in order to build a training center that is unnecessary and unwanted by the local community. This project is also an embarrassing waste of taxpayer dollars and public resources, an attempt to appear tough on crime to corporate and wealthy interests rather than making meaningful investments in our communities.
Mr. Sardana, please have a seat.
The Sierra Club reraates its call for the mayor and city council to cancel this lease for this project and protect the Walani Forest.
If you continue, I will not allow you back at council for a number of meetings. Please remain with your right to speak. Please be seated. Thank you, Mr. Sardana. Your time has expired. Next will be Rachel Allred. Rachel Allred, you'll have two minutes.
If y'all could go back to your seat before I start, that would be really appreciated. Thank you. Must be your first time here. It's all good. I'm on your side as well, but don't say the F-word to me. Thank you. It's disrespectful. Okay. Nice to meet you all. Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Allred, King Arnold Street, Hateful, Georgia District 12. I came across a packet the other day that said October 3, 2022. After watching, I became very infuriated, disrespected, and deeply offended. It was a meeting where Atlanta had the opportunity finally to give the necessary respect to the sheriff of Atlanta, the sheriff of Atlanta. I really don't like calling people out, but ignorance is something that I cannot excuse. Councilmember Bakhtiari and Councilmember Juan, I don't know if y'all are historians or if you guys forgot, but you represent Atlanta. So your opinion turns into legislation, and your opinion will never be superior to someone who actually lived through the conditions of, well, y'all don't know about either, being in the slums of Atlanta. Yeah, y'all don't look like that type either. So anyway, you will never have the opinion that will be superior to someone who actually lived that life. So councilmembers, don't ever speak over the president by arrogantly interrupting Mr. Bond. Mr. Juan, you said that it was not the appropriate time. I don't know if y'all are historians, but this is precisely the moment and is appropriate, because opportunities don't come like this very often for Atlanta. You both completely messed up the legislation. So again, don't ever think that your opinion regarding situations that have nothing to do with the life that you've lived would be ever superior to Mr. Bond's, Antonio Lewis' Overstreets, Ms. Boons, even Ms. Norwood knew what was going on. So I just hope that you guys, as leaders, will get the other people who also voted no to step up. Thank you, Ms. Norwood, for, you know, understanding what's going on. You clearly are new here, so nice to meet you as well. Your opinion will never be superior to the people who are actually living that life. So please let this be the last time I have to address it.
Yes, my turn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Yes, I do find it very interesting that a white person's coming here trying to educate people on the black history of Atlanta, but let's put that aside for a minute.
So I also wasn't aware that city council, I didn't know that city council could talk back to me like that.
You called me out directly, so I can't.
So, yeah, because you were wrong. I don't think you're allowed to talk back to me. I don't think you're allowed to talk back to me. I don't think you are allowed to talk back to me.
Stop spitting on the mic. Let's take a breath.
I don't think you're allowed to talk back to me.
If someone has called out.
I don't think it's the legislature, "Oh, baby girl, I'm fine. You're the one speaking out of turn," and you're still being arrogant. This is what she did this morning.
Yes, I called you out because you think that's wrong for us to fight against mass incarceration.
You can't talk to me. You cannot talk to me after my time is given. No, you actually can't. Is it true that she can talk to me? And now it will be given true. Now it will be true.
If any speaker calls out a councilmember by name, then they can be recognized to respond.
Let me make it very clear that I have every right to talk about my experience as a person growing up in Atlanta, and I will be damned if a white person tells me about the black history of the city. And let me also say that I will always fight against mass incarceration. You must be new here. Have a good day. Bye. Have a good day. Have a good day. And to the black members, shh. Bye, Rachel. To the black members of this audience that were spoken to, spoken to poorly by this white woman who came up here to try to educate you on your history, you have every right to stand up and say something. This city did you wrong. The jail never should've been expanded, and I'm so sorry that it happened. And my God, if she ever comes back in here, I'm happy, happy to continue having the conversation that mass incarceration is never the answer to solving incarceration.
Next will be Micah Hurstkind. Due to yielded time, you'll have six minutes.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that makes things easier. Hi, councilmembers. My name is Micah Hurstkind. I'm a public policy associate at the Southern Center for Human Rights. You've already heard today from clergy, environmental organizations, concerned community members about why the attempt to build Cop City must be halted immediately. But I want to speak today about the recent killing, the police killing of a forest offender, Tortuguita, and the city hall response to it. So in January of this year, just a couple months ago, as part of a joint police raid in the forest that included your officers, the Atlanta Police Department, Georgia State Patrol opened fire on and killed a forest offender who went by Tortuguita. Immediately, the GBI began to spin a story telling the public why Tortuguita deserved to be shot over 12 times, this 26-year-old person. That was a story from the GBI that went unchallenged by those in power, including many of those on this council, who are often willing to comment on police violence in other cities but have been completely silent on it when it happened here in Atlanta. There was immediate skepticism from many regarding the GBI narrative, because as all too recent history has shown us, the most common thing police do after they kill is they lie, and they tell us why actually this person deserved to be killed by the police. We've seen it time and again, and you all know that. Just a couple weeks later, despite the GBI's statements, APD body camera footage came out in which APD officers were seen speculating, as confirmed by GBI, that the trooper who was struck during the January raid was actually the victim of friendly fire. That, again, went completely uncommented by this body, who so often claims to care about police violence. To date, almost no information has been released about the actual event, the details, that resulted in a precious soul being taken from this earth at the age of 26. As the body, you all that authorized this project where someone was killed, you have a responsibility not just to completely pause and halt the project, but also to provide some basic transparency around the actual circumstances of this killing. Your officers were involved in taking somebody's life, and again, it's been nothing but silence. Southern Center can provide a full list of the things that you all can be providing, but to name a couple, we need all law enforcement agencies, officers, and identification numbers released. We still don't even have information about who was on the ground at the time. This is a complete abdication of duty. Likewise, the public deserves to know which agencies planned the clearing operations, which agencies led it. There should be a release of all body camera footage available, both audio and visual, from all law enforcement agencies that were on the site, as well as any of the agencies involved in any arrests of anybody on the scene. These are all basic, simple things that cities should be doing in the wake of police killings, and again, it's been complete silence thus far from this council. Again, there's more we can share on the exact things that you ask for, or that you can ask for and that you can promote for the public. But I want to say that the lack of transparency around this killing of Tortuguita is the same lack of transparency that's occurred throughout this entire process. The Community Stakeholder Advisory Committee, which has been entrusted supposedly to collect input, was basically just dismantled because it was such an obvious sham. The Supporter Report has done incredible reporting on this. The city's not even using it anymore, and they're creating a new task force, because I guess that's what you do when you don't get the information that you want from the first community advisory committee. At the same time, we're seeing sweeping repression, mass arrests, overzealous criminal prosecutions. Over 40 people have been charged with domestic terrorism, many of which have been for things that amount really to no more than criminal trespass, which is what people who just got proclamations had themselves been arrested for. And now we're here charging them with domestic terrorism. You all are people who can recognize that that on its face is ridiculous. Charging protesters part of a social movement with domestic terrorism is a dangerous sign of where things are going when it comes to police repression of our movements. This should all be deeply concerning to you as councilmembers, and I will tell you, they are concerning to many national human and civil rights organizations who are flooding in to monitor the situation, because they are seeing that despite the way that Atlanta likes to talk about its civil rights history, it has completely disregarded the civil and human rights of its people. You've already received a letter sent by the Southern Poverty Law Center and the Southern Center for Human Rights to the United Nations body charged with evaluating nations on police violence. People are watching. All eyes are in Atlanta, and they're not going anywhere. There are thousands of people here for the Week of Action. This is the fifth Week of Action. You've seen clergy, community members, preschoolers marching through the streets who are near the site, environmentalists, abolitionists, activists from all over who are committed to stopping Cop City. This is not a problem that's going to go away if you are able to remain silent about it for long enough. This is the body that authorized the creation of this facility. This is the body that authorized the creation of facility where someone has now been killed. At the very least, you all can recognize that it's time to pause and halt this project, do a full, transparent, independent investigation, and call off Cop City. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Satya Vati. Or Vatis, sorry.
Hi, everybody. My name is Satya Vati. I'm a nurse and also an organizer with the PSL, Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm here today with many from the community to demand that the city immediately end its support for the Cop City project. Stop Cop City now. Cop City is a project of oppression, death, police terror, a project to further militarize the police to suppress the mass social movements of millions of people that we will see in this country in the coming years. We will see millions of people rise up against deepening poverty and poverty wages in the richest country in the world, against endless US wars, against climate change, against the right-wing attack on our democratic rights and more. In the summer of 2020, 37 million people protested in the streets in the wake of the police murder of George Floyd, demanding an end to police terror, the real domestic terrorism and white supremacy. And one more clear demand emerged from that rebellion across the country, which was defund the police. The billions of dollars that could be used to fund people's needs, housing, healthcare, education, childcare are being pumped into criminalizing the poor oppressed communities and those fighting the many injustices facing working-class people. Instead of defunding the police, politicians of both parties have doubled down to fund police departments even more. Cop City is an extremely unpopular among the people of Atlanta and beyond, but the popular will of the people is being ignored. What we have here are politicians who ignore the interests of the people and in the end protect and serve the interests of the ultra-rich, the capitalists, and the corporations. What we see here is not a people's democracy. This is a farce. This is a democracy for the rich. Working-class people like us would have a say in people's democracy. We will not stop fighting injustice, no matter the consequences. Drop all the charges on the protesters. Stop Cop City now. Defund the police and racist mass incarceration. We are not asking. We are demanding. The people of this city demand this of you, so do it. Do your damn job.
Time has expired. Next is Miko Shabon Colonel. Next is Leo Seiji Allen. Had to leave. Jody Wims, I can't quite, Williams.
I yielded my time.
Oh, thank you. Matthew Johnson. Matthew Johnson. Barbara Antonopoulos.
Yes. Thank you. I turned 70 last week, and I've lived in Atlanta my whole life. I'm not an outsider, and I am here to say to you that I find Cop City to be an abomination. My husband is a pastor of a church a couple of miles from here, and he could not be here today. He's out of town, but he stands with me with these comments. One of the things that we hate is religious hypocrisy. And I have to tell you that when I heard that prayer at the beginning of this meeting about this being a sacred and holy place, about this being the people's house, when I know that before that decision was made, you all were supposed to listen, I don't know if you did or not, to 17 hours of testimony, 70% of which was in opposition to this facility, that there were emails and phone calls and all sorts of other expressions of opposition, and yet you voted for it. I think it's a little hypocritical to ask the Lord to bless your work. I could talk long, but the people who have spoken before me have said the things I would say, but I would like to say that I pretty much agree with every single thing they have said about this insanity that you all are calling a police safety training facility. So I think you need to just cancel it, start having some real conversations with the people of this city to solve the real problems in a way that will actually be effective, and this facility is not going to be it. And the mayor's proposed task force is just one more way to try to propagandize us to believe that this is good for us when we're not stupid and we know it's just lipstick on a pig.
Yes.
Thank you. Next will be Melissa Way. And I apologize, I can't read the handwriting on the next one, but the initials are A and last name J. Maybe Antion. Okay, Jacob Dallas.
My name is Jacob. I was one of the people who gave comment before Cop City was authorized, one of those people of hours and hours standing against it, so I'm not going to come here today and tell y'all that I oppose it, because you know that I oppose it. You know that the people oppose it. That's not a question. You're not confused about that. You're not still looking at the data. You know people don't want the city, the Cop City. So I'll tell you what is happening, though. Just the other day, I was listening to a podcast, and people who live out West, and they were saying, "We have to fight against police in our towns so we don't end up like Atlanta." They were saying, "So we don't end up like Atlanta." And they were joking and talking about, "Oh, they've turned into Robocop over there. They've turned into that city that's just run by cops. They're militarized. They're running it like some kind of futuristic fascist hellscape over there," because that is what they have turned it into. So I'm not coming here to beg you to stop Cop City, because we already did that. We already talked to you about that. You know we don't want it. You know the people don't want it. You know what it's caused. You know it's already caused blood. You know it's already caused blood. I'm coming to tell you what you have caused already. I'm coming to tell you that we are being laughed at by the rest of the United States and that people are disgusted with the actions that have taken place here and that the people of Atlanta are disgusted with what is happening here. And I can just say this. Whether you build it or not, whether it gets built or not, we will keep fighting it. If you build Cop City, we will fight to take it down. If it stands for 10 years, then we will fight another 10 years to take it down. That building might be built. You might do what you want to do with it, but we will keep fighting it and your replacements will get rid of it, or their replacements. Or when we take power, we will get rid of Cop City. I'll tell you that. You might as well get rid of it now because that building is a waste of time. And when all is said and done, the forest will return. So I'm going to tell you right now, don't waste your time. Stop Cop City right now because that land has always been forest and it will be forest when all is said and done. I don't know if it's going to happen in the next 10 years or I don't know if it's going to happen in the next 100 years, but we are going to make it happen if it has to be our children fighting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Natalie Villasana.
My name is Nat Villasana. I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I'm here to demand to stop Cop City. Stop its construction now. The majority of people in Atlanta oppose Cop City. And yet you're choosing to dedicate $90 million to this monument of violence, racism, and corporate interests. In 2020, 37 million people took to the streets across the United States demanding an end to racist police brutality. And what did this supposedly anti-racist government do? But doubled down in funding the police, who have terrorized the black community in Atlanta, who terrorized working-class people, who terrorized the homeless, who get away with cold-blooded murder, who escort people from their homes to uphold mass evictions. This is a disgrace. This is a disgrace. The police protect property and profits, not the people. The purpose of this project is to repress people's movements, to repress the righteous demands of working-class people. And it's absolutely undemocratic that people are speaking out, have been speaking out, have been fighting to stop this construction and still the city council pushes ahead using taxpayer money, using people's money to continue this construction. The police have already murdered an activist, someone who believed that people should be first, who believed that the environment and the planet should be prioritized, that fundamental. And we are here to demand that these fundamental needs should be protected. That's what this money could be going toward. Ensuring livable housing for the people of Atlanta. To stop landlords from squeezing low-income tenants for pennies, for fixing the crumbling infrastructure. You allow the Level 1 trauma center to close in the city because a corporation decided that the health of the people is not as important as corporate profits. And that's what this is again. Again and again, you put corporations ahead of the people. The city council should be ashamed of this cowardly decision to fund Cop City. Drop all charges against the activists. Stop Cop City.
Thank you. Next will be Nedra Dedwiler.
City Council, Council President. My name is Nedra Dedwiler, 87 Clay Street, Southeast. I'm just going to read a letter that I sent December 27th. I think it still applies. "There is pleasure in a pathless wood, Lord Byron." This line of poetry is specific. There is no other experience akin to walking or being in the woods, and more specifically, a woods with wildness. The Wilani Forest, South River Forest, is not bored of history. Those narratives parallel the known history of Atlanta from the earliest inhabitants to the use of comic labor. Now we are in a serious battle over the future of the forest. What is the highest and best use of the 3,500 acres that is home to waterways, native plants, shrubs, trees, birds, and all sorts of animals who inhabit Wilani? I am writing a personal letter to express my desire for the city to preserve and protect the land. I've resided in my home in District 5 for the past 10 years. I purchased my home before investors bought up Karkwood. After living a decade in two major cities, I returned back home. Born in Georgia Baptist, my first year of life was on Cleveland Road. My family moved back to a small town in Griffin, Georgia. And my backyard was a grove of pine trees. Those trees became my earliest friends. I spent a lot of time in the forest, as much time as with my cousins, pets, and toys. Those days playing amongst the forest, the pine trees, instilled a lifelong reverence for nature, a boundless imagination and curiosity. It is role research, the need of nature for child's development. "The Last Child in the Woods" by Richard Louv provides great insight for these learnings. Currently, the forest is eight miles from where my mother and her husband live. There are a lot of senior other black folks in their 70s and older who diligently worked a lifetime being positive.
Time has expired.
Stop Cop City.
Next is Jake Spotted Wolf.
Thank you, council. My name is Jake Spotted Wolf. I am an enrolled member of Mandan Erikara and Hidatsa Nation. I'm also a member of a Sina-Boni people of the Atchadi Shakawin, or what you know as a Sioux Nation. Over 1,000 citizens die at the hands of police every year. 1,096 last year alone. The average death rate for police is in the 40s annually. And most of those deaths are accidental. Officers hit by a car while helping a motorist or a firearm accidentally discharging a fatal bullet. It is riskier to be a citizen in this country than it is to be a police officer, literally, statistically. As evidenced by the rape kits that sit on discovery shelves in police departments across the country, police don't solve crime. And as evidenced by the fact that we still have crime in this country, police also do nothing to prevent crime. So we pay the taxpayer dollars for officers to harass, injure, and violate protected constitutional rights. Every protest I've been to, I have not had a weapon. I have never been violent. I have been standing there with a megaphone and taken into jail. We pay those dollars for these officers to destroy families by taking parents and care providers out of homes and into correctional facilities, compromising further the working poor and black and brown bodies that officers perpetrate violence on the most. We pay officers to be violent and complicit in the murder of each citizen they murder. And you guys continue to ramp up funding for police to terrorize your community. Plain and simple. There's no argument in that debate. Policing is the 22nd most dangerous job in America. Linemen, oil derrick riggers, and police pizza delivery people are statistically more dangerous than police working in the United States. This training facility will not make citizens safer, but will give police more weapons, more training, and more protocol to be highly trained assassins. Countries like Portugal have proven how investing in community first drastically reduced property damage, alcoholism and addiction, boosted employment rates, slowed incidents of physical violence in their communities, and incrementally supported higher and higher rates of all markers and standards by which the UN dictates a community is flourishing and thriving rather than floundering under state oppression and violence. There are many other examples of how housing first and funneling monies to the people and away from the violent institution of policing have proven to bolster safe and stable communities, none of which police had any hand in promoting or establishing. The money invested in Cop City would be hugely impactful in breaking cycles of generational trauma and poverty if invested in housing first, food access, early and secondary education, community centers, mentoring programs, and safety nets to keep your most marginalized people from suffering the fate that is very, very broken, dysfunctional, American racist dream. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Erica Mead. Erica Mead.
How are y'all doing today? My name is Erica Mead. I'm a Atlanta resident in District 1. So in school, I learned how faith helps a society collectively decide what is important for everyone collectively. And for example, I was raised Protestant. And in Protestant beliefs, we generally follow the life of Jesus Christ, and we base our actions on His actions, just as an example. Today, I call on the Atlanta City Council to collectively decide what is important for the city of Atlanta. What is more valuable, breathable air or toxic tear gas? What is more valuable, parks for children to play or ranges for bullets to fly? Cop City, the training facility, is said to fight crime. Imagine what crime will look like when clean water becomes too expensive for the working masses. What will crime look like when clean air is no longer a human right but it is a commercial product that can be bought and sold? Yield power to the people of Atlanta. We will not wait for permission, but we are here to demand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Panajiati Solkas. I received the sheet late. I know you wanted to yield time to Mr. Harlan. I apologize. So I'll give you two.
That's okay. He said he didn't need it. My name is Panayoti Cholkas. I'm with the Center for Biological Diversity. I drove about 10 hours to take part in protests this weekend. And I helped gather signatures for a petition we circulated from thousands of people all across the country. And if that makes you want to call me an outside agitator, then that's fine with me because I've traveled all over the country fighting for environmental justice and for wildlife protection. And I've also called on people to come and help support fights where I live in Florida when we have threats against the watershed I live in, the Northeast Everglades, from developers, in many cases, the same developers that are responsible for projects like this happening in the South River Forest. And the same business interests that are gentrifying neighborhoods and clearing forests are very frequently the same investors and contractors in cities all over the country. So we all have a vested interest in that way. And I've been grateful to be able to call on the environmental movement and people of social conscience to come and be involved in organizing and protecting places that I love where I live. And so I try to do the same. And I would like to hope that it would be welcomed and invited by people who care about the community and the place where they live. Your constituents put the calls out to invite people to support this work. And that's why I came, because people who you're supposed to represent were asking for help because their representation was not being respected. So I think you have the power to rescind the permits for this development and not doing so and allowing a violation of what could have been a further, in this case, an injunction to ensure further environmental review because there's a strong allegation that this development is going to violate the Federal Clean Water Act by further degrading an already imperiled watershed. That could have stopped construction. There could have and should have been nothing on the APF development site to be destroyed over the weekend. And so that's on you guys who allowed that and invited that. And I think that you've heard very clearly from people that live here and people who live all over the country that you could do something different. And if you don't do it, people that come after you could do something different.
Thank you. Yes, tell me your name.
My name is Melissa Hughley. I think you pronounced my name wrong.
Yes, yes, thank you. Sorry, I couldn't read the handwriting.
That's fine. I'm here today to speak on the homelessness in Atlanta. Basically, in my community, I have people living under the bridge as of right now with a tent, with all of their belongings. Pad has been called. Pad is doing a little, but not a lot. A lot of these people do not want to go into shelters. I do not know why, but they do not. So how are we addressing that concern and that issue? It is running rampant in Atlanta, too rampant at that. Homelessness looks different nowadays. You have people who sleep in their cars with jobs. You have people who sleep in their jobs who had a house who can no longer stay in their homes because of the high cost of rent and inflation in the city of Atlanta. Atlanta is named amongst all 50 states of the highest homelessness rate in the country. For this to be a black union city, we're not unified at all. I'm seeing half of the blacks that are out here. We have different cultures that are homeless. I go out and I speak with them with SOS. I'm not always on TV. I don't care to be on TV. I don't care for no picture. I don't care for any of that. If we're going to address it, then we need to be out there actually addressing the people. I talk to homeless people. I have met plenty who have master degrees who can't even get a job because guess why? They don't have an address or they don't look the part. They don't have proper clothing. They don't have proper healthcare. They don't have any of these things that require them to get a job. So what is the City of Atlanta Council doing about these issues? I'm quite sure y'all see the homeless people standing right down the street from right here. You walk past them every day. I'm quite sure another of you all say, "Hey, how you doing? What's your story?" But you walk past them every day because I see them every day. I can call out every neighborhood of every last one of you alls where they sit and where they are right now. And I'm wondering if any of y'all can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out from the public today to provide their comments. We will now move to the report of the journal. Madam Deputy Clerk.
I, Vanessa Walden, Deputy Municipal Clerk of the City of Atlanta, hereby certify that the action minutes of the February 20th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Atlanta City Council are true and correct.
Are there any objections? I'm sorry? Hold on just a second. Madam Deputy Clerk. What's your name?
Alma.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Lot.
I know you know you slipped my ear. You went on about your business, didn't you?
Sorry, Ms. Lot.
I appreciate it, though. And I thank y'all for honoring me today. But I want to talk about, y'all already know, as I come here, talking about Vine City, Ingerslet Avenue, and the West End, about all this homelessness. But the other day, a young lady came to me. She got four children. Her furniture ended up on the streets. Where her children, where they going? She don't know. But I'm quite sure, as I come up here every year, year after year after year, and I've been telling y'all this even before y'all sold out to the developers, I said a fact. Y'all is going to bring crime in our communities. Now I was seeing the citizens, they got to walk in the daytime and hold the police parked in the post office for they can get back home safely. I seen a white man, three young men jumped on him real bad on Martin Luther King. An elderly white man. And I called the police. But look how long it took them to get there. Y'all need to get together and find housing in our communities. Get our youths off the streets. Y'all could still save the babies. If y'all can't save the rest of them, I ain't talking about putting them in jails cells and hiding away from their families where they can't go visit them and see them. We put y'all in these seats. The people put y'all here. And we didn't put y'all here for nothing. We put y'all here for a reason. Because we heard a voice. First thing y'all come out your mouth is affordable housing. I don't want affordable housing. Affordable means a business or anything. That's what people get misled at. We need low-income housing. We need what we had in our communities, Vine City, Ingerslet Avenue, West End, where people were having family reunions, joining together, having all kinds of events. And they unify as one. These children don't need to be on the streets. These parents' babies don't need to be on the streets. I'm talking to all y'all. And over half y'all is black.
Time has expired.
And over half y'all is part of us. So don't disown us. We put you there.
Thank you. Again, thank you to all the members of the public who came out today. Madam Deputy Clerk, let's start again. Could you give the report of the journal, please?
I, Vanessa Walden, Deputy Municipal Clerk of the City of Atlanta, hereby certify that the action minutes of the February 20th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Atlanta City Council are true and correct.
Are there any changes to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilmember Juan, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Winston. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the minutes? We can do this with unanimous consent without objection. Any objection to the motion to adopt the minutes? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the counter unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent is 12 yays, 0 nays.
12 yays, 0 nays. The motion to adopt the minutes passes. Next, we'll move to communications. Madam Deputy Clerk.[1760.12]
Yes, sir. I have the first four items to be taken as a block, please.
Without objection. Please proceed.
23C 5036, a communication from Ann Phillips, President of Atlanta Planning and Advisory Board, APAB, submitting the appointment of Mr. Bob Morris to serve as a member of the Atlanta Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. Number 2, 23C 5037, a communication from Ann Phillips, President of Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, the appointment of Mr. Ronald Grunwald to serve as a member of the Atlanta Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. 23C 5038, a communication from Tanya Greer, County Clerk, to the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, submitting the appointment of Mr. Lamar Willis to the Atlanta Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. Number 4, 23C 5039, a communication from Council President Doug Shipman, appointing Ms. Jana Gray to serve as a member of the Housing Commission, representing the mortgage lending community. This appointment is for a term of three years. All four items to be referred to the Community Development Human Services Committee and the Committee on Counsel.
Let all four items follow that course.
The next three as well, Mr. President.
Without objection. Please proceed.
Number 5, 23C 5040, a communication from Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet, District 11, appointing Ms. Shay Embry to serve as a member of the Stakeholder Oversight Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. Number 6, 23C 5041, a communication from Councilmembers Jason Winston, District 1, Amir Farroki, District 2, Byron Amos, District 3, Jason Dozier, District 4, and Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large, appointing Ms. Alice Yin to serve as a member of the Stakeholder Oversight Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. Number 7, 23C 5042, a communication from Councilmembers Jason Winston, District 1, Amir Farroki, District 2, Byron Amos, District 3, Jason Dozier, District 4, and Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large, appointing Mr. Philip Perry to serve as a member of the Stakeholder Oversight Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. All three items, I'm sorry, yes, all three items to be referred to Transportation Committee and Committee on Counsel.
Let all three items follow that course.
Number 8, 23C 5043, a communication from Council President Doug Shipman, reappointing Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Carly Swift, to serve as a member of the Atlanta Commission on Women. This appointment is for a term of two years, to begin retroactively on January 22, 2023, and expire January 21, 2025. The recommendation is to refer to the Committee on Counsel.
Let it follow that course.
The next three items as a block, sir.
Without objection. Please proceed.
23C 5044, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Fletcher James to serve as a member of the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission. This appointment is for a term of two years. 23C 5045, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Candace Rodriguez to serve as a member of the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission. This appointment is for a term of two years. Lastly, 23C 5046, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, reappointing Ms. Lolita Browning-Jackson to serve as a member of the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission. This appointment is for a term of two years, to begin retroactively on January 19, 2022, and expire January 18, 2024. All three items are recommended to be referred to the City Utilities Committee and the Committee on Counsel.
Let all the items follow that course. Is there any legislation that's been vetoed for consideration today?
No, sir.
Is there any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion. We go into committee of the whole to hear from our public safety leaders, Chief Sheerbaum and Chief Smith.
There's been a motion by Councilmember Hillis, seconded by Councilmember Wes Moreland, to move in committee of the whole. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we can do this via unanimous consent. Is there any objection to moving in committee of the whole? Hearing none. Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to move in committee of the whole.
Unanimous consent, 10 yeas, I'm sorry, 11 yeas, zero nays.
11 yeas, zero nays. The motion to move into committee of the whole carries. The agenda has de facto been amended. We're now in committee of the whole. I would ask Chief Pete, you said, or Chief Sheerbaum?
We'll be hearing from Chief Sheerbaum and Chief Smith.
Oh, Chief Smith, sorry.
They're in the building. Head of this way.
Chief Sheerbaum, Chief Smith, we have amended our agenda to open it up to allow you to make a presentation, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Shipman. Good afternoon, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to brief you all. Welcome, Chief Smith, with your way as well.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chief Smith, Broad Smith, Atlanta Fire Rescue, Fire Chief.
President Shipman, members of the council, I'd like to brief you on events that transpired yesterday at the site of the Future Public Safety Training Center, making sure that we brought accurate facts to this body and that you're aware of fully what transpired. We do have a presentation that we're going to show if we go to the first slide. And that we also, Mr. President, have a video that can do much more justice than I can that will portray the events that occurred yesterday. As you are aware, there is a week of action occurring in the city this week, where there is individuals gathered to raise concern and engage in a variety of activities in opposition to the Public Safety Training Center. That has occurred in the past. This police department has protected peaceful protest over and over again, when other individuals do gather in any type of opposition where they are expressing their First Amendment rights. There was a two-day event occurring that happened on Saturday and Sunday, when a music event was being held in DeKalb County, some, and land adjacent to where the Public Safety Training Center is being, being built. If you'll go to the next slide, please. During this two-day event, individuals were gathered for a musical. Different groups were performing. On the latter part of the second day, a group of individuals that up until that moment had been, being there peacefully, we began to notice started to change into black clothing and organized and gathering items that would indicate to us that a peaceful protest was not planned, but there may potentially be other actions that were underfoot. If you'll go to the next slide, please. What we saw is this group moved rather quickly to the site for the proposed Public Safety Training Center. They were equipped with a variety of items, commercial fireworks, Molotov cocktails. You also see that they will have shields in the video we'll play shortly. They moved quickly on the group of officers that were assembled there. These officers had been stationary at the site, protecting the location. Go to the next slide, please. The, I'm going to let the video play here while I walk through each of the situations. What you see here is a group of individuals, approximately 100 in number, that are approaching the officers that are stationary on top of the hill. The officers are in a fenced-in area. The officers are on city property and are positioning themselves in no patrol activity. They're just there at that location. You'll see individuals starting to form. If you'll notice, in the first line, there are individuals with shields that are forming. And what you can't see is devices that will soon be used to attack the officers, who are actually behind a fenced-in area. What has just transpired is that individuals were seen changing out of the clothes that they were wearing at the concert, and were now dressing themselves in all black, with backpacks, with items offensive nature approaching. As you'll notice, as the officers see these individuals approaching, they are clearly aligned to take aggressive action against these officers. The officers attempted first to de-escalate by repositioning themselves, thank you, repositioning themselves inside of the fenced-in area. The officers again start to reposition because they can tell this is not a peaceful demonstration. This is actually going to be an attack on them as, as the fenced-in area is breached. You can start to see smoke occurring. As fires are set, Molotov cocktails are thrown, and fireworks are discharged. You will see the individuals, and this is from our air unit that is deployed in the area, you will see individuals that have started to move against the officers. They will have, start throwing rocks, fireworks, as they are pushing the officers in the area. We are fortunate that our officers had the ability to relocate in a manner to limit the engagements with the individuals. If you'll notice in the top left-hand portion of the screen, you'll see a number of persons coming through the fence after they had lobbed objects at the officers. These individuals, particularly those with the shields, are going to move to the front gate, where they're going to position themselves, what it appears to be an attempt to keep, pursuing the officers. And you will shortly start seeing rocks being thrown at the officers. You saw one just being thrown by the individual. And then shortly, you will see fireworks being lodged at the officers. The officers are moving to protect additional city assets that are behind this area. And you'll see a firework that was just lobbed at the lieutenant that is discharging. You're going to see this continue from a variety of angles, particularly in areas that aren't necessarily in view of this camera. These attacks are going to continue as officers are repositioning. The, the fireworks keep being thrown. We're going to switch back, and you'll see one has just landed to the left side of the, of the screen. And you will also see smoke from other fires that are starting to be set around the area. We're going to switch now to a different camera view, where we see individuals, as another group is engaging the officers with rocks, Molotov cocktails and bottles, are moving to set fire to the various equipments that are in the area. What you see in the left hand of the gentleman with the mask over his face is a Molotov cocktail. It is being, there will be accelerants in his hands that will be used also to attack some of the construction equipment that is in the area. These individuals are masked to hide their identity. This is playing out across the area that had previously been fenced in. There will be generators that will be destroyed, other pieces of equipment that's being destroyed. There you see more accelerant being thrown onto the vehicle that is being set on fire. At this time, our officers are showing great restraint. Despite the attack, and despite an effort to inflict vitally hard upon them, they remained in a position to be able to be prepared as additional units arrived to move in and will soon be, again, making arrests, but to ensure that they are being restrained in the, in the ability to protect themselves, the remainder of the city assets that are still under their care, and to be able to move quickly to start enforcing the law with our partners. And what you see here, ladies and gentlemen, is as some of the individuals that had just previously attacked the worksite returned back into the woods, they start changing back into the clothes that they were just wearing moments before, as they were portraying themselves to be attendees of the event that was occurring in the music. So it was clear today that we saw a repeat of what we've seen in the past, where events that are shown to be peaceful and to be, being publicized as be peaceful, are being used by individuals as cover to launch illegal and criminal attacks, in this case, attacking officers of this police department. And I want to commend every man and woman on duty yesterday, as they stood in the gap to do their job, which is protect the property of this city, which was to ensure that we have a Public Safety Training Center built, to, to ensure that everyone that calls 911 in Atlanta, Georgia, gets a proper professional response, the restraint they showed when they stood there in the attack and repositioned themselves, to be prepared to go back in and make an arrest, make lawful arrest, within the manner of their training and their discipline, to ensure that the individuals that just had moments before launched attacks on them and attempted to destroy the property, arrests were made. I'm going to let the Fire Chief speak regarding the, the threats and dangers that were around the fires, and then we're going to come back and give you a briefing, Mr. President, on those that were arrested yesterday.
Good afternoon again. What you will see on the photo to the left is you will see one of several spot fires that were set on last evening, in addition to, you see the large plume of smoke. In this space, what you deem is potential for a wildland fire to be established in this area, which is a threat, not only to the first responders that were working out on that scene, however, but to the protesters as well as the citizens in that community. In addition to that, what you do not see is that the old landfill that is adjacent to this space is emitting methane gas, and so that provides another hazard yet that we have to deal with as we relate to protecting the public. If you look at the picture on the right, you will see at the base, our critical infrastructure. You will see at the base of one of the large, high-voltage power lines that feeds the corridor coming into downtown Atlanta, and it feeds not only Grady Hospital, but assisted living facilities, as well as citizens who live in town for the City of Atlanta. So as you can see, the simple threat of just spot fires has the potential to cause a lot of harm, a lot of danger to the citizens that we ensure that we will protect on a day-to-day basis. And I'll turn it back over to the police chief.
Thank you, Chief. Council President, members of the council, shortly after you saw this, the attack on the men and women of the Atlanta Police Department, we had a rapid response from our partners at the DeKalb County Police Department, the Sheriff of Fulton County, as well as the Georgia State Patrol. Those officers entered into the woods as individuals were attempting to flee, hide the weapons they had just used, as well as to change their clothing, and we began to make a number of arrests. The individuals that were arrested, again, were showing the pattern of what we've seen in previous arrests in the city. And I again want to make the distinction, if I may, Mr. President, is that there are two things that simultaneously occur in many of those events. Those individuals that are exercising their rights under the First Amendment for peaceful protest, whatever their position may be. This police department continues to protect them. But on the other side of that, individuals that are using criminal acts to attack, to be able to undermine the business of good government and be able to harm both property and lives. Just last night, officers of this department, as well as DeKalb County, the Georgia State Patrol, and the Sheriff's Department moved in and made 23 arrests. What we learned as we moved through those arrests, the vast majority of those individuals were not, again, from our city or even from our region. With other 23 people being arrested yesterday, only two resided in the state of Georgia, and only one had an address from here within our city limits of Atlanta. The individuals were arrested, and I want to thank the men and women, again, of the Atlanta Police Department, the Georgia State Patrol, the Sheriff's Department, as well as the DeKalb County Police Department, for the professionalism that, that they demonstrated throughout the night and into the early hours of this morning. While many of us were asleep, they continued to work through the night to make the arrests and take these individuals into custody that had earlier in the evening attempted to bring harm to our officers. As we continue to move through the, the week, we know there's a number of events that are planned in our city and in the region. This police department will be protecting those events. Everything that is peaceful, that is orderly, that is taking a position that may be in opposition to ours, we're going to protect those. Because every citizen of this country and in this city has that right. What you do not have the right to do is attack members of law enforcement. What you do not have the right to do is attack other citizens, who may be there to legitimately demonstrate their views on these issues, but then are used as cover to launch these type of attacks. You place them in harm. You place them at the risk of arrest when they were there to legitimately protest. Individuals that may use this week to, to bring further attacks on public safety on property of this government and private property in Atlanta, Georgia, will be arrested, and they will be placed before a court, so those courts can hear our cases and make the appropriate judgment. And so we would encourage everyone to please be mindful that there are individuals in our city that are using peaceful protest for cover, and that will use peaceful protest to do what we just demonstrated by video on the screen. And we are in a position, Mr. President, to take actions that we are deem appropriate to protect the First Amendment and to hold individuals accountable that would do, desire to do harm in our city.
Thank you, Chief Smith, Chief Sheerbaum. Since we are in committee of the whole, questions, if you are open to them, are allowed, if that is okay by both of you. Councilmember Norwood.
Yes, my question is this. We had an entire chamber filled with people who had a different narrative. There were cameras, there were lots of television cameras that had been here all afternoon. So my question to the administration, not necessarily to you two gentlemen, is why do we do this when no one is left? When all of those people who have been down here claiming to represent the majority of the city of Atlanta, whether they are or not, but they didn't see this? This was really good information. I would have loved for every one of those very hysterical people that we've been sitting and listening to for two or three hours to have seen an actual video of what really did happen. And there may be great reasons that the administration chose to do it this way, but our media is gone, and all the people that needed to see this are gone. So that's not a question, that's just a observation.
Councilmember Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, chiefs, for this information and presentation. First, I know there have been previous injuries, but were there any firefighter or police, city employee injuries at yesterday's event? Councilmember Hillis, there was not. We're very fortunate that that was the outcome. You saw what was being lodged at our officers and what was being fired at them, as well as the firefighters that later responded. And so we're fortunate that there was no injuries. Thank you for that. Next question is, you know, as you stated, you know, there's a stark
Next question is, you know, as you stated, you know, there's a stark difference between the right to peaceful protests. Yet we have people that are taking advantage of those peaceful protests and causing injuries to people, throwing Molotov cocktails at officers and damaging millions of dollars of equipment. Some that's not even related to the Public Safety Center build that just happens to be in the area. So as you mentioned, and as council members know, you know, we have pooled resources from police zones. We have a number of partners, thankfully, state and other local law enforcement and federal law enforcement. So what is, if this continues, do we have the ability to deploy even greater force to quill this, you know, the millions of damage, millions of dollars of damage to public and private properties?
We will make adjustments as those that use various tactics. Yesterday was an escalation. We had not seen this large number of individuals engage in this activity. And the aggressive manner in which the officers were attacked was a significant change from what we had seen before. When it generally had been setting property on fire, we'd seen police cars set on fire, windows busted. But this was started as an attack against individuals, men and women who are employees of this city. So that was an escalation, Councilmember Hillis, that we have already made adjustments for, both within our capability as well as with our partners. And I would like to point out that yesterday, after this occurred, we saw a very prompt response from the Georgia Bureau of Investigation, as well as response from the Federal Bureau of Investigation, who are on scene within a very short period of time. The charges that have been brought today in DeKalb County have been brought by the Georgia Bureau of Investigation of charging these individuals with domestic terrorism, which was the warrants that were secured today. So we do have the ability to continue to leverage our resources of our partners. And we will make adjustments to ensure that whatever is presented to us that we're in a position to address.
Thank you for that. And as you mentioned, very thankful to the men and women of APD and AFRD for all their work and for all of our partners in this. And just pray for a continued peaceful protest as everyone has the right to do and the safety of our officers and firefighters. So thank you.
Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. First, Chief Sheerbaum and Chief Smith, you all have, as always, I love working with you all. I don't know how you do all that you do. I'm glad that nobody was hurt and none of our, none of our employees were hurt yesterday during the escalation, as you put it. Some things I am concerned about. Well, one, I would love for you to elaborate on the role of the FBI within this investigation.
Yes, ma'am. We have been seeing over the last number of months crimes that have been occurring in other cities focused toward the Public Safety Training Center. So we have seen arsons in cities outside of Atlanta. We've seen the destruction of property outside of Atlanta. And we've seen the harassment of private sector employees outside of Atlanta. So that is the nexus where the Federal Bureau of Investigation has been assisting in this investigation.
Thank you. I'm curious about the, you said that also, I believe a civil rights lawyer was arrested yesterday.
I'm not sure of the occupation of the arrestees.
I believe that they are a constituent of mine. And I believe they are. I'll follow up questions about that. One of the things that does concern me, I want to first say that I do not agree with the destruction of property. As you have heard my colleagues say, that is not something I agree with. Something that does concern me, however, is the overuse of the word terrorism. It is very dangerous. And as somebody who grew up being called a terrorist for being Muslim, for living in a very racist community, to me, whereas I do think of property damage vandalism, all of these things are absolutely correct. The use of the word terrorism, as it has been freely used consistently and continually, to me is an overarching by the state. It is problematic terminology for our city to be using. It is also a very slippery slope when it comes to the First Amendment right. And what it feels like to me is the trumped up charges for the sake of being able to then say, the state to say, you've overreached, and then for probation to be administered. I think that is very dangerous when it comes to our First Amendment right. That is, I would really encourage us to think twice before using the word terrorist in some of these charges. There's a reason that it has not stuck in this country for really ever. So I would really like us to be thoughtful. That being said, I'm also curious as to why we have APD officers on site for a location that we have no jurisdiction over. We have no legal jurisdiction on this property. I really want to commend my colleague, Councilmember Lewis, for bringing this to, for talking about this during PSLA. But why do we have officers on location or firefighters on location if we have no legal jurisdiction on this property? It seems to me that that is a problem. And also spending money that we really, I don't know why we're spending that money when this is APF, this is an APF project.
Yes, ma'am. I will tell you this, we have deputized officers that are at that location. And we have structured our position there with our jurisdictions and it is aligned with the law. I will always let the judges and the prosecutors determine what the charges would be and be prosecuted. But I do not want any man and woman that works for the Atlanta Police Department to think for a second their chief tolerates the violence that has been levied against them, both on Peachtree Street and on Key Road. And so for the men and women of this police department that hear my voice, know that we will do everything we're going to do, can do to protect you. We're going to give you the tools and the resources to ensure that they uphold the law properly and in the manner that the Constitution requires them to. So we will always be in consultation with the district attorneys of the two counties and the prosecutorial bodies to ensure the appropriate charges are brought. And never think for a moment that if a charge is brought against this person who is acting in a violent manner, that it ever reflects on someone that is acting in a peaceful manner that are exhibiting their rights under the Constitution.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Chief, for coming in today. I know you're pretty busy, both of you are, for coming in today. I was thinking about what happened last night and thinking about what we're doing moving forward. First, I want to ask you, how many people out of there arrested? How many people from, you said from how many states?
Yes, sir. There were 23 individuals arrested, and I believe they were from 14 different states.
Okay, how many from Atlanta?
One from Atlanta.
And one from Georgia, right?
One from, I believe it was Athens, yes, sir.
Okay, so when I think about it, because what happened, remind me, it looked like January 6th. I ain't never seen police run from a group of people. And so the only thing I could think about when I saw that video, I saw it on ATL scoop. The video is all out there, I've been seeing it all over. And when I saw the police officers run, I mean, I was a little nervous. When I saw the heat map, I saw 100 people, I saw, I saw it. I mean, like, that ain't the Atlanta way. And so when you say that, when you say that many people were actually part of it, we skip. I mean, I ain't never seen, I'm just thinking about the, at the same time at Six Flags, we had some young men that were fighting. Some of our teenagers fighting at Six Flags, they didn't run up on the police. They didn't run up on the police with Molotov cocktails, throwing to burn up stuff, which is totally different from what we're doing. We talk about like protesting against something, which I've done. Rashad Brooks is a friend of mine, Oscar Kane is a friend of mine. Oscar Kane was actually the activist, the reason why we wear cameras, why our police wear cameras on their chest. Oscar Kane was the activist that came down here and got that going. And so he was actually killed by a police officer who cut his camera off. He never would have ran at his police officers. So what I will say, I thank you so much for last night for working. I want to really commend the officers because y'all were under some immense pressure and to not see a gun fired back. Because when I see the firecrackers, I'm from Cleveland Avenue. If they throw firecrackers at me, I don't know those firecrackers. So when I see those popping off, I'm just thinking as an individual, as a person, I'm seeing some of the, I've never seen that, so I appreciate APD for doing that. I'll switch over now to how I think we can keep APD officers safe. Because I agree with Councilmember Bakhtiari that we don't have jurisdiction over there. And so I'll ask you the same question I asked the other day. Is there any place ever that the city of Atlanta Police Department has ever done this for any other organization?
Councilmember Lewis, and I think we also had these discussions at PSLA. This is the first time in my time being on the Atlanta Police Department or resident of the city that we've ever built a public safety training center. We know that the both that we have for the fire and the police department are outdated. They both have been condemned. And we know for what we ask of our men and women, they do not have sufficient facilities. So the investment in their ability to serve the citizens of this city is significant. The investment that ensure that anyone who dials 911 in Atlanta, Georgia from the year 2024 and beyond has a properly trained and equipped police and fire department. So this is the first time, because it's the first time we've had this type of investment in the men and women who say yes to public service. And as we craft our ability to protect against that, our ability to protect against that, it will be done in a manner that is legal and proper with under the law and is using the resources that are just the proper amount to be able to do what we have to do in that space. We're not going to put any extra officers in there that we don't have to. And I hope that film, that video, rather, demonstrates why we even have to have resources there. We're only there because there's that. If there's no that, there will not be police officers of any jurisdictions at that location.
And so the, I'm looking at the Atlanta City Council presentation, agency collaborations, and the one glaring mission was DeKalb Police Department.
And DeKalb should have been on that, sir. We apologize. They were out there with us last night. It was actually their command post that we were operating out of yesterday evening. There was a significant number of resources that were deployed by the DeKalb Police Department. And so I hope for a moment that our missing that logo on that page does not reflect the commitment of that department that was there yesterday evening and until the early hours of this morning.
I'm extremely hopeful that Atlanta Police Department officers are able to get extra jobs while doing this. I, as long as this is going on, as long as we are actually removing police officers from our different departments. I, once again, I don't want one move from District 12, part of Zone 3, because we know a crime law. I had a friend that was shot this weekend. I don't want one move from District 12, part of Zone 3. Because we having a police shortage, I know we are the ones that are facing the grun of it. But I would like to know if there's an opportunity to where we can actually move our folks out until we get the state to come in more, get other folks to take in. Because Atlanta Police Department, we talk about our shortages, we've been talking about it since I got elected. I don't think that we can put our people over there.
So we are crafting a deployment plan that is smart, that takes into consideration of our ability to fight crime, protect large events. We have the parade coming up this weekend for St. Patrick's Day. We will continue to do that and craft a smart deployment plan out there that allows the project to proceed, protects those that are working on it and doesn't diminish public safety in the city. That will evolve over the next few weeks and months. But you do know you have my commitment to ensure that we have the smartest deployment plan in place.
And I think the reason why I feel so strongly about it is because I've, we've had to find security and we've had to pay police extra jobs to do midnight basketball. We've had to pay folks to actually have, we have to get police for anything we're doing at parks and we have to pay for extra jobs. I love it. I love to see our police officers make some extra money. And so with what's going on, if our police officers want to go out there, they deserve that extra job. Right now, I think we're mandating them to go out there. And I just don't want to see my district, since District 12, I can't speak for everybody else. I would prefer if the district, to give Major Ricker some power. Me speaking, now, he didn't ask me to do this, this is me giving him some power, giving him some resources. I would prefer if his officers can stay in his zone as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, President Shipman. Thank you so much, Chief Sheerbaum. Thank you so much, Chief Smith. Thank you for coming down to City Hall today. My question is a small question, but I also think it's a kind of a big question. And it's, I've seen a lot of the reporting about what, just in the immediate aftermath of the fireworks and the fires. There was a, to your point, a large operation to try to make sure everyone was safe. And I've seen reports that members of the press or legal observers were caught up in that mix, including particularly folks who are still incarcerated right now. Can you unpack that or speak to those charges or those claims? Because to me, I mean, we talked about the First Amendment, people's rights with regards to that. But that is also a reflection of that First Amendment right. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything in our power as a city or everything that's possible to us in this coordination or this collaborative effort with other law enforcement entities to ensure that folks that can be out there, even though they're physically in those spaces, are not being held in a way that they shouldn't be.
Certainly. And I believe, and I will get you a correct number, Councilmember Dozier, that approximately 10 individuals were detained who was determined had not engaged in a criminal activity other than being on the property, which in itself is illegal. And so they were issued criminal trespass warnings and allowed to leave. So there are those that we know we've encountered for the first time that were not engaged in a criminal act, that were actually on the property, that were given criminal trespass warnings and were escorted off the property. Those, because of the charges being brought by the Georgia Bureau of Investigation with support of the various agencies, I can't speak in detail to each of those. But the charges were placed in a charging document that a judge, an independent judge has agreed with. And so if there's anything specifically that we can look into for you, we will. But if there is someone on the property that we do, that they're there for the first time, we don't believe they're engaged in what you saw on the video screen, they're given criminal trespass warnings. And that occurred yesterday. And I believe it was approximately 10 times that it occurred yesterday. And we do have an extensive list of individuals who we've afforded that right to leave the property if they choose to do so and that they're given warnings, we maintain that. And those individuals, if they do not return, will not be arrested.
Any other questions from councilmembers?
President Shipman, I just wanted to address on behalf of the mayor's office, Brian Thomas, Director of Communications of the Mayor's Office of Communications. I wanted to address Councilmember Norwood's comments regarding the media and our presentation today. First, I wanted to say that we are respecting the council's process here. We wanted to make sure, as council does by tradition and practice, that you do proclamations and public comment. We certainly didn't want to insert ourselves on that process. Do want to encourage you that the media is here, Channel 26 is broadcasting, and we have shared this feed with both local and national media. Since this project began, we have been battling misinformation. We'd like to enlist the council's support in tackling some of that information. One place to start is our website, www.atltrainingcenter.com. There are facts on that page, there are videos on that page. And we'd encourage you to share that with your constituents, just as we are doing through the city. It's really important that we get the right information out there. There is misinformation out there. There was misinformation presented by, through public comment today, and we recognize that. We're going to support the public's right to share that information even when we disagree with it. To the questions of jurisdiction, I do want to just clarify, this is the same site, this is the same larger property that housed the Atlanta Police Academy about nearly 50 years ago. There's been ongoing police training, explosive ordinance disposal, SWAT team training at this site for 50 years. The police's presence on this site is not new, nor is it unusual. So we want to make sure that that is clear.
Mr. Thomas, would you be open to questions from councilmembers, Councilmember Bakhtiari?
Well, of course I have to be nice to your constituent.
Absolutely.
No, I thank you very much. But I do have a question. Our own legal team spoke about us not having jurisdiction there. So I am, these are the things that I get confused about because it's two different sources of information. So one, there is that piece, and I am also wondering, moving forward, are we going to be doing anything about working with agencies that do not utilize body cameras? Because that is, it is 2023. And while we don't have jurisdiction over the state, I cannot, like, I cannot imagine that we would not want to make sure that we are working with agencies who, if they are wielding guns and weapons, should be utilizing body cameras in 2023. So especially when we take a look at everything that's happened, especially since 2020. So I'm curious as if we are going to make a request at the state, if we are going to offer to get federal money. I've researched quite a few federal grants that we could easily utilize to make sure that that's being done. Is there anything that we have planned to push for accountability, fully knowing that we do not have jurisdiction of the state, but are we going to be doing anything to push for that?
Thank you, councilmember. So on the first part, I'll caveat, I am not a lawyer and we share a law department, so we should have those conversations with our law department. I will say that the Atlanta Police Department is working in coalition with a number of law enforcement agencies, as the chief presented here today, including GBI, including the DeKalb PD, so that there is a clear interdepartmental agreement there with how that operation works. As pertains to body cameras, I would just say that, you know, I think the mayor, this is something the mayor has asked about as well. And this may be a question for council as well. And I believe there's maybe some legislation that's being considered to consider. You know, in joint law enforcement operations, what would be the role of body worn cameras? Obviously, Atlanta Police Department do wear body worn cameras. It's proven enormously beneficial in restoring trust with the community. So it's a policy that the city certainly fully supports for its own officers. As it pertains to other jurisdictions, as you said, we can't control that, but there may be legislative options that this council can consider to encourage that in joint operations.
Councilmember Lewis.
And for clarification purposes, for people at home, a lot of folks, they always say that we're building this in a majority black community. Can I ask, where's the current public safety facility?
I'm going to turn to Chief for that.
It may sound like I'm asking you a question I know the answer to.
We currently do not have a public safety training facility.
But the closest thing that you have is where?
So we
So, we had to get out of a school. It was condemned. We were using an old elementary school right there in your jurisdiction.
District 12, right there in District 12. So, and it's in the most blackest part of my district. It's in Pool Creek. And if you really want to think about, anybody who knows sitting at home, they'll know that the current, where the police all going to in the daytime to train has been in District 12 the entire time. And this new one will be where?
Key Road.
DeKalb County. I mean, DeKalb, city of DeKalb?
Right there, the city, the county, the city and county line, yes.
Three districts away from District 12 where my folks are. I just want to make sure that we say that it's currently in District 12, but it's getting out of District 12. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes, just have a quick question. Don't know who on the team it'd be related to, but can this presentation and video be shared?
It absolutely can. We'll be posting it online. APD will be sharing that full video out. I would do call your attention to APD's website and social media channels. There are already a number of videos that are posted there. Would ask your help to amplify those. We'll be posting this full presentation, including the video of the chief's remarks to council, and we'll be sharing that presentation digitally with council as well. So, we'd encourage you to do so.
Second.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? All right, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Godspeed to you and to all of your officers and personnel. I would entertain a motion to move out of committee of the whole.
It's been moved by Mr. Hillis.
Oh, sorry, it's been, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize. Mr. Hillis, it's been moved by Mr. Hillis. Do I have a second?
Seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Is there any discussion on the move, on the motion to move out of committee of the whole? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection for moving out of committee of the whole. Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to return to council meeting.
Unanimous consent is 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. We've moved out of committee of the whole, back to the regular council meeting, and we are at the Consent Agenda Section 1 on the agenda. These are, begin on page 5, these are items for second reading. We will take them as a whole. The motion will be to adopt. First, let me ask if there are any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda, Councilmember Winston.
Yes, Council President, I'd like to remove item number 27, which is on page 15. This is 23-r-3226.
23-r-3226 on page 15 will be removed. Any other items to be removed from the Consent Agenda Section 1? With hearing that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda Section 1 minus the one item. Moved by Councilmember Wan, seconded by Councilmember Westmoreland. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda Section 1 with the one item excluded? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda Section 1 with the one item removed.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to adopt the Consent Agenda Section 1 carries. We'll now move to the Consent Agenda Section 2. These are items that begin on page 19. These are items for first reading. The appropriate motion will be to refer these items, but first let me ask, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda Section 2? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to refer. Moved by Councilmember Wan, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer the Consent Agenda items in Section 2? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer the Consent Agenda Section 2.
14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to refer carries. We'll now move to the report of standing committees. We'll begin today with CDHS. Chair Dozier.
Thank you, President Shipman. My colleagues, we have one item today. I return to page 22 in the agenda. It is item 23-0-1118, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone to waive a provision of the Second Amendment and restated intergovernmental agreement between the City of Atlanta and the Atlanta Housing Opportunity Incorporated, also known as Housing Cooperation, authorized pursuant to 20-0-1779 to support the development of a 76-unit affordable housing project at 2980 Delmar Lane Northwest and for other purposes. This was filed in CDHS at the request of the author, and so, I'll move to file.
So, motion coming out of committee to file. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to file 23-0-1118? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will all members please vote? The vote is closed. 14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to file carries.
Thank you. That is my only legislative item. However, I do have one quick announcement. Colleagues, the First Quarter Comprehensive Development Plan Land Use Amendment Public Hearing will be this week on Wednesday, March 8th at 6 o'clock PM, right here in the City Council chambers. I hope you all will join me. It'll be a wonderful time. It'll be a blast. Come on out. See you Wednesday.
Thank you. Next up will be the Transportation Committee Chair Faroki.
Thank you, President Shipman. We have four items today. The first is 22-0-1721. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute a quick claim deed to the City of College Park to convey tax parcel listed herein located on Redwine Road, College Park, Georgia, execute a quick claim deed to College Park to convey tax parcels listed herein located on the south side of Harvard Avenue in College Park, Georgia, to accept a quick claim deed from the College Park Business Industrial Development Authority conveying tax parcels listed herein located on the north side of Harvard Avenue in College Park, Georgia to the city for the purposes of consummating the transactions authorized by ordinance 12-0-055. In further purposes, this paper is requested to be filed by the Department of Aviation, and that's the direction this should go, came out of committee.
There's a motion to file coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second. 22-0-1721. Is there any discussion on the motion to file? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to file carries.
Next item is 23-0-1110, item 2 on page 26. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute Amendment Number 1 to the Project Management Agreement for the Little Five Points Smart Mobility Improvement Study with the Little Five Points Community Improvement District to extend the term of the agreement for a period not to exceed 1,067 days, to begin retroactively on February 28, 2021, giving a new expiration date of January 31, 2024, with no additional funding required and further purposes. This came out of committee. Five yeas, one abstention, that abstention being myself, as I sit on the board of Little Five Points CID. The motion is to adopt, coming out of committee.
There's a motion to adopt 23-0-1110. It doesn't need a second. It's coming out of committee. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is closed. 12 yeas, 0 nays, one abstention.
12 yeas, 0 nays, one abstention. The motion carries. Just for clarity, Councilmember Faroki, can you state again why you abstained?
I abstain because I'm on the board of Little Five Points CID. It sits in my district. No professional, financial, or personal interest in this legislation or affected by it in that way, but for the sake of optics, thought it'd be best if I abstained.
Thank you. Please proceed.
The next paper is 23-0-1111. It's item number 3 on page 26. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to abandon portions of a public street known as North Circle Drive, consisting of approximately 0.2026 acres lying and being in land lot 248 of the 17th District of Fulton County, Georgia, be more specifically described in the attached Exhibit A to LWH Carey Park LLC, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute a quick claim deed for such abandon right of way and further purposes. This item was favorable on a condition, that condition being that ATL DOT meet with Councilmember Hillis as this falls in his district. That condition has been met. The motion is to adopt.
There's a motion coming out of committee to adopt 23-0-1111. Doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. President, my screen is frozen, but I'm an aye.
Please reflect. Councilmember Westmoreland's an aye.
Duly noted. 14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to adopt carries.
And finally, 23-r-3272, which is item 4 on page 27. I have your packet. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute renewal option number 2 for FC 9034 On Street Parking Management Program with SP Plus All-in-One Joint Venture on behalf of the Department of Transportation for a term of one year effective March 14, 2023 through March 13, 2024 and for other purposes. This came out of committee. Four yeas, one nay. Motion is to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt 23-r-3272 coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Westmoreland, aye.
Councilmember Westmoreland's an aye.
Duly noted. 13 yeas, one nay.
13 yeas, one nay. The motion carries.
That concludes the Transportation Committee report.
Thank you. Next up will be Finance Exec Chair Wan.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, we are on page 30 of the agenda. We have one item today. It's 23-c-5034, a communication from Danielle Hampton, Chair Audit Committee, submitting the Performance Audit Report Municipal Market. Motion from the committee is to accept and file.
There's a motion coming out of committee to accept and file 23-c-5034. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to accept and file? We'll do this via unanimous consent without objections since it's a communication. Any objection? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to accept
Unanimous consent is 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to accept and file carries.
Mr. President, before I sit back down, two quick announcements. First off, colleagues, the budget hearing schedule will be published and provided to all councilmembers on March 15th, this Wednesday, I'm sorry, this coming Wednesday next week during committee. And then, subsequent to that, I'll be introducing a personal paper today to cover and capture our fiscal year 2024 budget priorities, which we will discuss at our March 15th FEC meeting. If you have anything you'd like to have included, please email me or Corinne Lindo so that we can include that in that packet. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Wan. We amended the agenda earlier to move the City Utilities Committee ahead of the Committee on Council, so I'm going to call on Councilmember Winston per that change in the agenda for the City Utilities Committee report.
Thank you, Council President. I pulled an item off of consent. This is item number 27 on page 15, 23-r-3226. For this item, we'll need to go in committee of the whole. I make a motion to go in committee of the whole.
There's a motion to move in committee of the whole by Councilmember Winston, seconded by Councilmember Westmoreland. Is there any discussion on the move in committee of the whole? We do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on the motion to move in committee of the whole, unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent is 14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to move in committee of the whole carries. We're now in committee of the whole.
Colleagues, item number 23-r-3226, a resolution by committee on council, I'm sorry, this item needs to be referred to the committee on council, so it was actually sent to City Utilities, so I'm going to read it. A resolution by committee on council appointing Councilmember Keisha Sean Waits to serve as the Atlanta City Council Member on the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission for a term of two years for the purpose of performing the duties and responsibilities of the Commission for the City of Atlanta and for other purposes. The motion is to refer to committee on council.
There's a motion to refer 23-r-3226 to committee on council by Councilmember Winston. There was a second by Councilmember, no, it wasn't. Who is that? Dozier? Who, it was Councilmember Wan. Councilmember Bakhtiari's trying to get an additional second on her scorecard today. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer this to committee on council? Hearing none, we'll open vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. 14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to refer carries.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to come out of committee of the whole.
There's a motion by Councilmember Winston, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari to move out of committee of the whole and back into regular session of council. Is there any discussion on this motion? We do this via unanimous consent, any objection to moving out of committee of the whole? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to move out of committee of the whole.
Unanimous consent is 14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. The motion carries. We are now back in regular session.
Thank you, Council President. That concludes the report for City Utilities Committee.
Councilmember Winston, almost done. We need to actually adopt what was done in committee of the whole by council, so you're going to have to do a motion to refer one more time.
I'd like to make a motion to refer the resolution 23-r-3226 to committee on council.
Motion by Councilmember Winston, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Any discussion on the motion to refer? I'm going to allow us to do this via unanimous consent. If there's no objection, any objection? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent is 14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. The motion carries.
Thank you, Council President. That now concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Winston. Now, we will move to the City, the Committee on Council, Chair Bakhtiari. And before the chair begins, I would like to say a very happy birthday to Chair Bakhtiari.
Thank you.
I'll allow the clap in one time.
Thank you so much. We have items, we have seven items today communications. They were both favorable out of COC this morning. I guess I should go ahead and read the setups. So, you're just going to read the second captions? Okay. 23-d-5015, a communication from Councilmembers Jason Winston, Amir Faroki, Byron Amos, Jason Dozier, and Michael Julian Bond, appointing Ms. Sarah Butler to serve as a member of the Atlanta Beltline Affordable Housing Advisory Board. This appointment is for a term of two years. 23-d-5017, a communication from Councilmembers Dustin Hillis, Andrea L. Boone, Marcy Collier Overstreet, Antonio Lewis, Keisha Sean Waits, appointing, reappointing Mr. Barry Kamek to serve as a member of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. This appointment's for a term of two years, term to begin retroactively on February 4, 2023, and expire February 3, 2025. 23-d-5019, a communication from Ann Phillips, President of the Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, submitting the appointment of Ms. Adrian Proler to serve on the Atlanta Citizen Review Board in the Neighborhood Planning Unit Group. S, blah, 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 blah. Okay, this appointment's for a term of three years. Okay, this appointment is for a term of three years. 23-C-0-5030, a communication from councilmembers Dustin Hillis, Boon, Overstreet, Antonio Lewis, and Keisha Sean Waits, appointing Mr. Scott Walker to serve as a member of the Housing Commission. This appointment is for a term of two years. 23-C-5031, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Fulton County Commissioner Dana Barrett to serve as a member of the Atlanta Development Authority Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of four years. 23-C-5032, a communication from Mayor Dickens, appointing Ms. Carla Inez-Pennyman to serve as a member of the Zoning Review Board in the Municipal Planning Category. This appointment is for a term of two years. And finally, 23-R-3225, a resolution by Committee on Council appointing Ms. Sarah Stein to the Board of Directors of the Atlanta Development Authority and Best Atlanta as the Council, City Council appointee in the Business Category for a term of four years. Set term to begin upon approval of this resolution and for other purposes. So I think we can move to adopt. Yeah. So I move to adopt all seven.
These are all found favorable in committee.
These are all found favorable in committees.
There's a motion to adopt coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second to adopt these seven items. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt these seven items. Correct. Oh, you want to do them six, six plus one? Okay. So we'll actually, I'm going to take them in two steps. Let's first do a motion to adopt the six communication items and we'll do the resolution separately.
Motion to adopt the six communication items.
There's a motion coming out of committee that doesn't need a second to adopt the six communication items. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt these six items? Hearing none will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt these six items.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt these six communications carries.
Thank you, and I move to adopt 20, Resolution 23-R-3225.
Resolution, there's a motion coming out of the committee that doesn't need a second to adopt 23-R-3225. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Did it come from committee or no?
No, favorable, it was deemed favorable by City Utilities.
Oh, I'm sorry. So there's a motion by Councilmember Bakhtiari, seconded by Councilmember Wan, to adopt 23-R-3225. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt. Councilmember Boon, how would you like your vote reflected?
Aye.
Give us just a moment. We want to make sure there are systems reflecting our actions.
Thank you, sir. The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Just for clarity, this is a motion to adopt 23-R-3225.
The vote is closed. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
The dance company hosted a special workshop for seniors at the old Adamsville Rec Center in northwest Atlanta. Performing signature Ailey moves could intimidate even the most talented dancer, but not Witherspoon.
I love all that drum beat. I like the sharp moves.
Hands to the ceiling, swaying left and right.
Forward, left.
The group worked its way through Revelations, Ailey's 1960 masterpiece, which explores African-American faith and persistence.
Up, up, up.
Through slavery to freedom.
Open the arms in the water. Mr. Ailey himself said that dance came from the people and that it should always be delivered back to the people.
What if you could feel in control of your retirement in just a few clicks? At aceyourretirement.org, you can. Start with a free three-minute chat with AVO, your friendly digital retirement coach. Just answer some simple questions like, how
Item number seven, 22-0-1036, U2232, the ordinances for a special use permit for a data center. Items two through seven were favorable as amended. I will move to adopt as amended.
There's a motion coming out of committee to adopt these items as amended. It doesn't need a second coming out of committee. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt these items? Hearing none will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Next, I'd like to take items eight and nine as a block without objection.
Please proceed.
Item number eight, 22-0-1857, Z2276, the ordinance is to rezone from R4 to MR2. Ordinance number nine, 23-0-1037, U2234, the ordinance is for a special use permit for a personal home daycare. Items eight and nine were filed by the committee, so I move to file items eight and nine.
There's a motion to file these two items coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to file these two items? Hearing none will move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to file carries.
Finally, item number 10, 22-0-1898, U-22-29. The location is 990 Peachtree Street Northeast, 250 14th Street Northeast, 979 Crescent Avenue. The ordinance is to grant a special use permit to sever excess development density. Item number 10 was forwarded to full council with no recommendation. Would any council member like to speak for or against the ordinance?
There's a, there's a motion to, there is not a motion to adopt, so it is simply sitting here. Councilmember Wan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the zoning committee, for moving this forward with no recommendation. Wanted a little more time to research and have some conversations about the application. With that, after reviewing the SUP application and the record, that was before the zoning review board on this application, I do not believe this application satisfies the requirements of Section 16-25.0023A that all SUP applications must meet. Among other concerns, satisfactory provisions and arrangements have not been made regarding ingress and egress to the proposed development and regarding the traffic flow and control around the proposed development. Accordingly, I move that the council file this paper.
There's a motion to file by Councilmember Wan, 22-0-1898. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Norwood. Is there any discussion on the motion to file? Councilmember Faroki.
Yeah, I'd just like to explain my vote. I'm going to vote against the motion to file, although I respect Councilmember Wan's position on the matter, and I would encourage you all to follow his lead. This sits across the street from District 2. It includes properties transitioning some density in District 2. You know, we need more housing in the city. This site's appropriate for density down on 14th Street, and so I think it should be built, but that's my position, and I respect Councilmember Wan's position as well. So, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to file? Hearing none will open the vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file 22-0-1898.
The vote is closed. Twelve yeas, one nay.
Twelve yeas, one nay. The motion to file carries.
That concludes the zoning committee's report.
Thank you. Finally, today, due to the agenda change, will be the Public Safety Committee Chair Hillis.
Public Safety Committee has no report, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll now move to personal papers. We have one item for immediate consideration. Councilmember Wan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I'll read in the resolution and then explain why I'm bringing it forward for immediate consideration. It's Elms ID 31289, a resolution by Councilmember Alex Wan to amend Resolution 21-R-3040, pursuant to which the City of Atlanta Alcohol Technical Advisory Group III, or ATAG III, was established to conduct a review and to identify recommendations for changes to the City of Atlanta's alcohol beverage licensing process in order to extend the time by which ATAG III must complete its review and recommendations such that it will, it shall be by no later than July 1, 2023, and for other purposes. Whereas the City of Atlanta has an interest in regulating through the lawful existence, exercise of its police powers, the sale of alcoholic beverages to provide for the safety and welfare of the citizens of the city and its visitors. And whereas in 2011, the City Council created the Alcohol Technical Advisory Group II, ATAG II, which was charged with the task of reviewing the city's alcohol beverage code and providing recommendations to the mayor and council, ask of reviewing the city's alcohol beverage code and providing recommendations to the mayor and council with regard to ways in which the existing process of issuing licenses and enforcing applicable laws could be improved. And whereas, as a result thereof, ATAG II, consisting of council members and community and industry representatives, proposed a series of ordinance changes to the then Alcohol Beverage Code. And whereas in 2021, the Atlanta City Council determined that new and additional concerns about alcoholic beverage licensing and enforcement were being raised by city council members and community representatives, giving rise to the necessity of a cohesive discussion and holistic update to the alcohol licensing processes and laws. Whereas accordingly, on February 1, 2021, the Atlanta City Council adopted 21-R-3040, which was approved by operation of law on February 10, 2021, and which established the Alcohol Technical Advisory Group III, or ATAG III, for the purpose of permitting community members and other stakeholders to review the alcohol beverage laws, ordinances, and regulations, so as to ascertain and recommend improvements to the city system of alcohol beverage licensing and enforcement that appropriately address today's demands and tomorrow's growth. And whereas pursuant to Resolution 21-R-3040, ATAG III was required to complete its review with and recommendations within six months of its first meeting. And whereas, as ATAG III's first meeting was on March 3, 2022, currently ATAG III was originally required to complete its review and recommendations by no later than February Friday, September 2, 2022. And whereas pursuant to Resolution 22-R-4030, which was adopted on August 15, 2022, and approved on August 24, 2022, Resolution 21-R-3040 was amended such that ATAG III would continue its work for additional six months, such that it have 12 months from the date of its first meeting to complete its review and recommendations. And whereas accordingly, ATAG III is required to complete its review and recommendations by no later than March 3, 2023. And whereas it is the desire of the Atlanta City Council to amend Resolution 21-R-3040 to permit ATAG III to continue its work for an additional 120 days, such that it complete its review and recommendations by no later than July 1, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Atlanta, of Atlanta, Georgia, that Section 7 of Resolution 21-R-3040 shall be amended such that the language contained here therein shall be deleted in its entirety and shall be replaced such that Section 7 shall thereafter read as follows. "Section 7, ATAG III shall complete its review and recommendations by no later than July 1, 2023. Be it finally resolved that the amendments contained in this resolution shall be effective immediately upon approval." Now that I've read that in, colleagues, I want to explain why I'm asking this for immediate consideration. There was a walk-in paper at Public Safety this past Monday that would accomplish this. We have been meeting, well, that would have extended the original time allocation. It's the exact same piece of legislation before you. However, the committee voted, did not vote to move that forward. And I want ATAG III, my aim is to have ATAG III stay on our meeting cadence, and we need the extra time, and we need to do this now, not to interfere with when our next scheduled meeting would be, given public notice required. be, given public notice requirement. I listened to the end of the Public Safety Committee meeting where there was discussion about this paper and rationale for why it was - there was not going to be support for it. And there was question about what we have been doing and why it's been taking so long. So I wanted to share with y'all that ATAG III has convened 18 times. This is the full committee since last March. We've also, because we've needed more sessions, have had approximately 10 small group, what we call breakout sessions, for smaller groups to go and research additional subjects. And then I have been meeting regularly, at least five times, with the leadership of Office of Nightlife to continue processing and discussing and keeping them updated as to our progress and timeline. If I do the calculations and the number of folks, this is amounted to well over 500 person hours that have been dedicated by this really committed group of folks. And I just want to prove to y'all, or really demonstrate, that this isn't a board or a commission that's been formed just for form or ceremony, but rather for substantive and really deliberative work. To prove that, we have a tracker of recommendations that right now has 212 line items. So there is a lot of really good work product coming out, recommendations around license applications and review with the NPU within the department, renewals, audit, APD License and Permits Department, the License Review Board, violations, and due cause. So I have to say, I'm really just grateful that this group of folks have been willing to commit this time. We anticipate we only need two more full meetings. One to go through this last set of open issues, and then the final meeting to collate, compile, and review. And so the recommendations should be ready to socialize at that point. I'm just as anxious to get this across the finish line as y'all are, particularly given some of the incidents that have been taking place and occurred. But I hope that y'all will respect all the people that you have appointed to this board to finish our work and just give us a little bit more time to do that. And if this fails today, I, you know, I'm going to ask y'all to do me a favor, those that vote against this, to go and reach out to the ATAG members to explain why you think they're not working hard enough or fast enough, because we have really been busting our behinds to try and get something that is comprehensive, something that makes sense, and works for not just communities, but also for the applicants as well. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to adopt Elms ID 32189 by Councilmember Juan, seconded by Councilmember Hillis. Is there a discussion on the matter, Councilmember Bond?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Juan, for your explanation. You know, when I introduced the legislation to create ATAG III, we had a devil of a time getting people to point it, and people were chomping at the bit for us to get started. The intention, the - for ATAG III was to go back and review the work that ATAG II had done. That was extensive and took three years to accomplish with two meetings a month, two public - public hearing a month, with extensive research, with folks in the community, the NPUs, same groups that are constituted there here today. And folks were so anxious for ATAG III to get underway that they - they started it without the person who wrote the legislation. You've since apologized for that, but the intention of ATAG III was to take six months to look at the work that had already been done, because I knew that when I wrote ATAG, the legislation to enable ATAG III, what an exhaustive, detailed, elongated process that it is to go back into the woods to recreate the work that citizens had done over a three-year period, a couple of years in the past. And so I assume that the emergency is no longer there that was there present a year ago when it started without the author. And so that - that doubting that people did good work or are doing good work, because I monitor the meetings. But we wanted to avoid this very situation where people, you know, this has become all drug out again, and people's relief is postponed. So can you tell us? I know during ATAG II, we regularly reported to the Public Safety Committee, and I know that when I've attempted to have a resolution from time to time that I felt was urgent, that, you know, I've been encouraged to go to committee. You've got a paper, the identical paper in committee. You know, why kept this way till committee convenes? That's my first question.
Thank you for the question. And I will say, because we have been meeting every three weeks, and I do believe that all of the council members that have been appointed to ATAG are - receive those calendar invites, they're here at City Hall. And so if we do not pass this tonight, the next scheduled meeting that everybody on ATAG has blocked on their calendars, we will not be able to convene, because it will have to wait until this passes council and then get signed by the mayor, and then we miss the seven-day meeting notice requirement. And so rather than lose momentum on this, I come before y'all today. I apologize for not being at Public Safety. I didn't think there would be an issue, but I recognize why the conversation came up. The other thing I will also say is that while I understand this was intended to go back and just take a cursory look at ATAG II's recommendation, two things. Number one is, ATAG II, that work happened over a decade ago, and I think the conditions and the players in the community have changed very much since then, and it deserved a deep refresh and relook. And I just appreciate the members of ATAG who have dug in and really, like I said, committed over 500 hours collectively to do this. The second thing is that, where was I going with this? Oh, ATAG II, all the recommendations, if you - when you see our spreadsheet that have it, all of ATAG II's recommendations are embedded in that. So we did base our work off of what the previous group's finding was and then built and then improved on it. But we also found other issues and other new problems that had come up based on community experience to add to that. So, you know, I think that, again, this issue deserved kind of a very - a deep dive rather than just a kind of a quick blush at it.
Mr. Bond. Yeah, that's the floor, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'll just push back on the idea that ATAG III was contemplated to be a quick blush at what had already been done. I mean, I'm glad that the - those things are incorporated, but remember that when ATAG III was introduced, it was introduced under urgency. I mean, you weren't on the council at the time, and we were trying to get people to point it. But now that the work is - is being done, you know, there's a principle of continuance of governance. There's no reason why ATAG can't meet. They're not prevented from meeting if this doesn't pass. And then there's the other point of, you know, I guess, I don't want to use the word subvert, but going around the committee process. You know, the committee wanted a report, as I recall, wanted somebody to come and talk to the Public Safety Committee at its next meeting. ATAG is a, you know, something close and near and dear to me, having spent a lot of time in both previous iterations, you know, being involved to one extent or the other. We all want to see the work get done, but, I mean, you know, you know, the committee had questions, or are they going to be addressed? I mean, is ATAG - is ATAG going to - is someone going to come from ATAG to brief us at our committee meeting, which was the desire of the committee? And for those of us who've been asked from time to time, when we've had legislation that we had hoped to vote on the floor, we've been encouraged to go to committee sometimes at the point of a vote, to force us to go to committee. But if we're going to engage in the committee process and encourage citizens and followers as well, I mean, there's no reason why you all can't meet in a couple of weeks anyway. So I guess my - my question again is, you know, how far of this work are you actually at? Because if you only need two more meetings, you know, why is this back ended to go into July of this year?
All right, I'm happy to answer that. Like I said, we have two more meetings to go through one final module of topics, and then one more meeting after that to compile and make sure we're all in agreement. We anticipate there will be a socialization period where we will have conversations, present to council, present to community, and then based on that, wanted to make sure we baked in enough time, if we needed to make any adjustments, that we would. And also, that is a commitment I've made to the Office of Nightlife, is giving them an opportunity to gain - give feedback as well. So that's the reason why I don't - I'm just as anxious. I want my Wednesday nights back, that, you know, when we're here from 5:30 to 7:30 every third Wednesday. It's - we're anxious to get this done too, Mr. Bond. But I also, just in proper form, don't want to be meeting in violation of the underlying resolution.
Well, just, I'm not - I don't want to dominate the questions, but the previous in ATAG II, the members voted out the recommendations that were made, because we had over close to 200 topics also, but we whittled them down. Is that something that's contemplated for this version of ATAG to do? Or are you going to present just what you've brought to the - brought to fore?
Mr. Bond, out of respect for the hard work that's been put into committees, I don't see a need to abridge them, also because we've taken painstaking effort to make sure that we look at it comprehensively. There are some proposals that are tied as to others, kind of a give and take from the community to the industry, and it don't make necessarily sense if we don't have kind of the whole picture painted for everyone. And I think, like I said, we'd be doing a disservice to the work if we did not come forward with that, or continue the spirit of kind of receiving information and feedback from community before polishing and presenting the final product.
Well, you know, this has been a new experience for me. I mean, I've just - the entire process and being here today is not something I was used to, and I appreciate you apologizing for, I guess, taking my legislation away from me. But, you know, the work's got to get done, but I don't - you know, I just, I don't know. I don't know how I feel about it. I don't think I'm going to support this today. I mean, we had a discussion about it in committee. I mean, you know, I know I walked into other committees thinking that my papers wouldn't have - wouldn't need that much explanation, and they get held up, stuff that I think is simple and pretty self-explanatory. And I - but I do think it's helpful that when people do have questions, and we're expecting somebody to come to the committee, that they do so. So I salute the work that's being done, you know, I'm obviously supportive of it. I was the original author, you know, of this process, but I don't think I'm going to be able to support this today.
Councilmember Norwood, did you want to speak? No. Councilmember Shook.
Call the question.
Called the previous question. This is seconded by Councilmember Faroki. Previous question cannot be debated, requires a two-thirds vote in order to pass. So Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to call the previous question.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Eleven yeas, one nay.
Eleven yeas, one nay. The motion to call the previous question carries. We'll move immediately to a vote on the motion to adopt Elms ID 32189. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is closed. Ten yeas, one nay.
Ten yeas, one nay. The motion to adopt carries. I don't believe there are any other items for immediate consideration, so we'll move to personal papers and items to be referred.
President, Chipman have two items versus Elms ID 32190, a resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta and the case of Pamela Hill versus City of Atlanta. Civil action file number listed in United States District Court, Northern District of Georgia, and the amount of $65,000. Authorizing said amount to be paid as follows. $65,000 from the account number listed. And authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the total settlement amount and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32190 will be referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Next items, Elms ID 32185, a resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis authorizing the mayor his designee to enter into a special purchasing agreement number listed, Axon Cloud Storage Devices and other related professional services with Axon Enterprises Incorporated on behalf of the City of Atlanta Police Department pursuant to section number listed of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for a term of 10 years and an amount not to exceed $90,907,595.30 with two one-year renewal options. All costs shall be charged to and - is that a typo? Charged to and listed below and for other purposes. Those scribers are in there, so please look at that.
Elms ID 32185 will be referred to the Public Safety Committee.
I complete my items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elms number ID 32186, 32186, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea Boone, Dustin Hillis, Matt Westmoreland, Antonio Lewis, and Michael Julian Bond, a resolution requesting the Georgia Department of Transportation to include the replacement of the Martin Luther King Jr. Drive Bridge located over I-285 in the I-285-I-20 interchange project, to request the Georgia Department of Transportation to host additional public forums with the affected communities and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32186 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms ID 32192, 32192, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Boone, Matt Westmoreland, and Michael Julian Bond to authorize the mayor his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute the third amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the City of Atlanta and Atlanta Housing Opportunity, Inc., Housing Corporation authorized pursuant to 20-0-1779 in order to expand the applicable units from 70 to units and to increase the maximum funding amount for the small multifamily developer loan program from $700,000, to authorize the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute amendments to any other documents as shall be necessary to effectuate this ordinance and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32192 will refer to the CDHS Committee.
Elms number 32126, 32126, and a resolution by Councilmember Andrea Boone, a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designee to issue task order number four for contract RFP-S 1210025B, citywide architectural planning, design, engineering, and constructional phase services with Fitzgerald Collaborative Group, LLC, for design services for fire station number 25 on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management in an amount not to exceed $634,261.0, all work to be charged to and paid from accounts listed and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32126 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elms ID 32162, a resolution by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland authorizing the mayor or his designate to exercise the third renewal option for SPS 1200203, Microsoft Unified Support Services with Microsoft Corporation on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Information Management for a period of one year effective June 8, 2023, through June 7, 2024, and to execute the First Amendment to the Agreement to Update the Enterprise Services Work Order for FY '23, and to add funding to, not, into an amount not to exceed $782,626,000.0, all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32162 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Elms ID 32191, an ordinance by Councilmembers Matt Westmoreland, Alex Wan, Liliana Batiari, to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, which prohibits discrimination throughout the city, to add two seats to the Human Relations Commission and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32191 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Faroki.
Elms ID 32128, a resolution by Councilmember Mayor Faroki authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an agreement with Georgia Power Company on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the maintenance and repair of the city's interstate lighting network within the Atlanta city limits and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32128 will be referred to the Transportation
Yes, sir. Amos, number 32195, a resolution by Councilmember Byron Amos and Matt Westmoreland, a resolution authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate a total amount not to exceed $75,000.0 to the Micro Life Institute to support the construction of affordable housing on Atlanta West Side and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32195 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Amos number ID 32188, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, an ordinance waiving Article 10, Division 4 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinance to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute contracts with the sponsors, performers, artists, venues, and vendors necessary to effectuate the City of Atlanta's hosting of the 2023 National League of Cities City Summit, Summit, to authorize the City of Atlanta to accept donations for the purpose of supporting the city's responsibilities related to hosting this summit in a total not to, in a total amount not to exceed, it'll be added later, through December 31, 2023, CY '23, to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget by transferring funds from the account name later to the account name later, and the amount of, add the amount to support the summit and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32188 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee. Thank you. Councilmember Winston.
First item, Elms 32155, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston, authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Atlanta Workforce Development Agency, AKA WorkSource Atlanta, to exercise an option to renew the contractual agreement for the number listed with Arbor ENT LLC, DBA Equus Workforce Solutions, for a term of one year and an amount not to exceed $750,000 for providing workforce service delivery for Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Youth Programs and Services to authorize the approval of an administrative memorandum to update account streams for payment pursuant to this agreement, to authorize the chief financial officer to make payments pursuant to the administrative memorandum. All contracted work shall be charged to and paid from accounts listed therein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32155 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Elms ID 32156, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston, authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Atlanta Workforce Development Agency, AKA WorkSource Atlanta, to authorize the approval of an administrative memorandum to update account streams for pursuant to agreement listed, WIOA, One Stop Career Center, Within the Door LLC, to authorize the chief financial officer to make payments pursuant to the administrative memorandum. All contracted work shall be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32156 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Elms ID 32157, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston, authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Atlanta Workforce Development Agency, also known as WorkSource Atlanta, to accept a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Dislocated Worker Grant for Quality Jobs Equity Strategy and Training Quest Employment and Training Activities from the Technical College System of Georgia, Office of Workforce Development in the amount of $700,000, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the FY '23 Job Training Grant Fund Budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in the amount of $700,000, $700,000.0 and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32157 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Thank you, Council President, that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item today, Elms ID number 32164, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Dozier authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the Capital Finance Fund Budget in the fiscal year 2023, Department of City Planning General Fund Budget by transferring an amount not to exceed $1,150,000.0 from the Capital Finance Fund to the fiscal year 2023, Department of City Planning General Fund, to fund building inspections and permitting services and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32164 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Elms ID 32194, an ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, an ordinance to rezone from O-1 Office Institutional Direct District to C-1 Community Business District 4, property located at 786 Cleveland Avenue Southwest, commencing at the intersection of the easterly right-of-way of Springdale Road with the southerly right-of-way of Cleveland Avenue, Debs, Varies, areas 4.95 acres, landlot 114th District, Fulton County, Georgia, Georgia LMPUX, Council District 12.
Elms ID 32194 will be jointly referred to the zoning and the ZRB committees.
An Elms ID number 31, I mean, 32127, a resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, co-sponsored by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, co-sponsored by Councilmember Keisha Sean Waits, co-sponsored by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, authorizing the mayor or his designate to issue task order number five for contract RFP S1210025C, Citywide Planning, Design, Engineering and Construction Phase Services with Harris Plus Smith LLC, for design services for Fire Station 30 on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management in an amount not to exceed $741,495.0, all work to be charged to and paid from accounts listed and for, and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32127 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
And, Mr. President, one change to Elms ID 32194. It was also signed by my at-large council members, Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, and Councilmember Keisha Sean Waits.
As noted. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Councilman Shook.
Thank you, Mr. President. This would be Elms 32184, an ordinance by Shook and Westmoreland authorizing a total donation in an amount not to exceed $15,000 from the District 7 and post to at-large carryforward accounts to the Blue Herring Nature Preserve to support building improvements and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32184 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee. Thank you. Councilmember Juan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elms ID 32197, an ordinance by councilmembers Alex Wan and Matt Westmoreland, authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $5,000.0 from the District 6 and post to at-large carryforward accounts to Virginia Highland Elementary School and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32197 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Elms ID 32196, an ordinance by Councilmember Alex Wan, authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed blank from the District 6 carryforward account to Morningside Lennox Park Association and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32196 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Elms ID 32182, a resolution by Councilmember Alex Wan, authorizing the chief financial officer to refund customers for overpayments to water and sewer accounts in an amount of blank, all funds to be charged to and paid from Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32182 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
And Elms ID 32120, a resolution by Councilmember Alex Wan, requesting that the mayor takes into consideration and funds priorities that the Atlanta City Council recommends be included in the FY 2024 budget and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32120 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee. Thank you. I believe that concludes the papers for referral today. With that, we will move to general remarks. Any general remarks from my colleagues? Councilman Bond.
This week's HelloFresh will be in beautiful District 3, at the Neighborhood Union Health Center at 186 Sunset Avenue, 30314, at 2:00 p.m. on March the 8th. At 2:00 p.m., we partner with Commissioner Natalie Hall this week, along with Second Helpings Atlanta, Pratt Industries, and of course, HelloFresh. We distribute over 8,000 meals a week to literally every district in the city through our partners, and we encourage all to come if you need it. If you don't need it, please spread the word. There's no prerequisite to receive the help. Just please walk up, show up, drive up. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Councilman Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind my District 4 constituents out there who are watching at home or listening on their workouts at the gym, that our next District 4 Quarterly Town Hall will be held this week on Thursday, March 9, at 6:30 p.m. We are being graciously hosted by District 4's Downtown's newest business, Wild Leaf Brewing, 125 Ted Turner. Hope to see you all there, and my colleagues are also welcome to continue to support our District 4 businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Amos.
Yes, sir. Very quickly, I'd like to wish my very own firstborn, my daughter Brittany Amos, happy birthday. So Liliana, two of you share a birthday. I'd also like to thank APD and Clippers and cops who came out and actually did a wonderful event on MLK, and then also give kudos to the Kennesaw State Basketball Team, who won their first-ever NCAA tournament bid. And then, last but not least, we got work anniversary. Shante Williams, Teresa Payne, and Michael Elser, who has been with the council for several years, so just want to wish them a happy work anniversary as well.
Thank you. Any other colleagues? I would just like to take a moment. Last week, in the state legislature, two bills were contemplated that would have allowed a referendum on Buckhead City. I wanted to publicly thank Senators Marlowe and Estevez, as well as Representative Holland, who worked extensively to try to showcase the problems with the bills, also on the mayor's team, who did yeoman's work, Kenyatta Mitchell and Courtney English, and also all of the folks who voted against those bills. I think that that vote was in the best interest of the City of Atlanta. With that, we will move to the adjourned roll call. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Council President Shipman.
Here.
Councilmembers Bond.
Here.
Westmoreland.
Waits.
Here.
Winston.
One's here.
Waits. Winston. Faroki. Amos.
Here.
Dozier.
Here.
Batiari.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Shook.
Here.
Norwood.
Here.
Hillis.
Here.
Boone.
Overstreet.
And Lewis.